Tuesday, March 7th, 2017, approximately 7:00 PM. I'd like to remind everyone that this meeting is being audio and visual taped, consistent with the open meeting laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, and will be rebroadcast on NCTV's government channel and uploaded online to YouTube. Joining me tonight, my colleagues Scott Bugby, Jim Lehan, our town administrator, Jack Hathaway, and our administrative assistant, Marion Harrington. So we usually open the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. Would you please join me? Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. So this evening, we have a pretty full agenda tonight, beginning with the 7 o'clock. I guess we're going to be hearing from Charity Stolarz regarding the Norfolk Cultural Council and a one-day beer and wine license. So I don't know if she's here this evening, Jack?
Sure, she was, oh, she just snuck in. She was, I told her that she didn't need to be here, but if she could be here, that would be great.
Welcome.
Yeah, come right up. Welcome, thank you. Take your time, take your time.
Handoff with husbands never as fast as. Ain't it to be?
And I'll catch your breath. Appreciate you being here.
My pleasure.
So sometimes applicants, you know, requesters, they come before us. Other times, they just leave it up to Mr. Hathaway. He does a pretty good job presenting.
Yeah.
It's good that you're here nonetheless.
Absolutely.
She's giving away beer, so. Here's one of the happy sponsors.
Exactly.
Giving away, okay.
So would you like to tell us about your event?
Yeah, absolutely. Everyone in town is invited. Our current artist on view in the library, Dimitri Vallone, is going to have an artist reception and just give the community an opportunity to meet the artist, talk about his work. It's going to be from 6:00 to 8:00 on March 24th. And we were just looking to have refreshments, beer, wine, crudités, some crackers and cheese and things like that, two basic spread. We're working on having a collaboration with a friend of mine that's a distributor for a local craft beer distributor, and he's working with the new CBC that's opening in Norfolk as far as I know.
Craft beer selling out?
Yeah, but he was not sure when exactly they're going to open, and that was kind of up in the air. Yeah, so we don't have an official go-ahead with them, but we're just looking to have like a one-time pouring license for people to have, you know, a glass of wine or a beer as they're, you know, communicating with the artist. And hopefully, we'll have that other piece, but if not, we'll save it for later in the summer.
Well, we appreciate the opportunities to bring, you know, culture to the town.
Absolutely.
You know, so thank you for, you know, all your work in putting these events together.
Yeah, hopefully, we'll do a lot more of them.
So.
Gentlemen?
No questions at all? I think it's great.
Okay.
Just quite, I like, who will be serving like the alcohol and stuff like that? I mean, is someone by any chance TIP certified, or how does that?
How long do those things last forever? Because I know I was TIP certified when I was a waitress in college. But certainly, we can have, if the vendor comes, then he will be, and he's, they're fully, you know, licensed and covered. He did mention that I'd have to come to you guys, obviously. And then if not, I know that another member of our cultural council is. So we could definitely have him, someone will be, you know, giving out. It won't just be like out for anybody to help themselves. So we'll have some control over that, for sure.
I move to approve.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you.
Now you can relieve your husband, so he'll be psyched. Like, that was easy. I'm off for the night.
Good luck with your event.
Yeah, thank you.
Probably more fun places to be than here, though.
Okay, so next, we have a public hearing. So James?
What is the question's one? When you want to do the question's one or?
It's down in the action items.
Oh, we'll do it there, okay. We're having a public hearing this evening. The Board of Selectmen, Licensing Board for the Town of Norfolk, will conduct a public hearing under the provisions of Chapter 101 of the Acts of 2004, Section 7, to determine the water budget for FY '18 and set prices and rates for usage of the water system. This hearing will be conducted on Tuesday, March 7th, 2017, at 7:00 PM in Room 124, Town Hall, 1 Liberty Lane, Norfolk, Mass. So says the Board of Selectmen.
Thank you. Mr. McGee. So Bob, come on up.
We need to formally open the public hearing, don't we?
Well, you already got settled over there with these things. I was wondering.
That comes a little bit later.
Point of order? I'd like to make a motion to formally open the public hearing.
Yeah. Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Marion, would, do you by any chance have the paperwork that I had given you and not the agenda, but sub agenda? One second, please.
Here, I can share it. Bob, you want this?
Yeah.
Well, as we do every year, we have water rates to consider, and this year, and not since 2011, have we had a water rate increase. No different this year. So we're looking, the Water Division is looking for the board to vote not to increase water rates this year. What I have is, you know, there's background to this thing, to my recommendation here. It says, "The Water Division has not increased rates since FY '11." But I do want you to know, as a result of the new water source investments that we've been making, we may look to increase the rates next year. So I guess that's good news. And a little later in the meeting, this well segues into what we're doing about water, what's going on, the impacts of water with growth right now. And with regards to that investment, we'll talk a little bit about where we are with our Holbrook Wellfield site.
Do you want to take these one at a time?
Yeah, yeah, just in terms of any public input, anything, you know, worthwhile discussing here?
The only one that we got, and I'm pretty sure I just handled it over the phone, it was, a new resident moving into town was inquiring about the $50 admin fee. And basically, that's just what it is. It's a charge that we send out with the bill. It's $50, and it just covers the administration work that goes into preparing bills and office work. And that was it. I haven't heard anything from anybody.
And that's the $50 is an annual fee? Is that what it is?
It's a semi-annual, comes out with the bill.
Oh, so $100 a year?
Yes.
So we're managing our costs, but their increased costs here coming as a result of the new source work that's being done.
Right. And I'd be letting the cat out of the bag if we didn't wait, you'd hear the professionals talk about what I'd be guessing at.
That's fine. So I guess with that, there is no further discussion from my colleagues. Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, do you want, is there, anyone ask for public input?
Anyone here tonight for that purpose?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And secondly, we have solid waste fee recommendation. It's pretty simple. So the Board, the Solid Waste Division is asking that the Board vote to increase container rentals from $25 per week to $50 per week after two weeks. As a bit of background, the Solid Waste Division rents 30-yard containers to residents. Presently, we charge $200 for a week, for a two-week rental, in addition, in an additional $25 a week charge after the two weeks. Plus, there's a tipping fee, so you know. We're recommending the charge of $50 a week after the two weeks, just a $25 increase, because we find that residents are holding containers longer and creating a longer waiting list. So I guess it comes down to, people will rent a container, they'll empty out their living room, whatever they do to load up with demolition material. They pay the $200 plus a tipping fee. It's like $85 a ton, whatever it is, I'm not quite sure, don't hold me to that. And they have it for two weeks. But after the two weeks, it seems easy for them to hang on to the container if they're in no rush with their demolition, depending on their contractors or how they're doing it, because $25 is just not enough. And we're just trying to build an incentive, we don't get rich on this at all, just to get that container back, because we found it to be a pretty good service, and people are using it. And often, we may be out of, you know, especially in the spring and the fall, we can run out of containers, because we only have so many.
Is there enough?
There's people holding on to them.
Is there enough demand to add more containers, like the two costs per?
But we have, we also have 40-yard containers, and if push comes to shove, we'll give the 40-yard container, which they can put more materials in at the same price. But we just, we just want to get the containers back from the people. We find that they'll hang on to it for, you know, six weeks, because 25 times six just isn't a lot of money to a lot of people. So maybe the $50 will get them moving, you know?
What's ballpark, how much does a container cost, I think is, where Scott's going with that?
If it's enough demand, I mean, it's like, yeah, we're not trying to make a profit, but if we can help the residents and break even and get more. Furthermore, though, a question, you know, have we ever thought then, only give them two weeks? I know what you're saying, Bob. Some jobs go longer, I don't know. You have to go back, if they're becoming a waiting list, maybe you have to go back to the bottom again, because try to be fair, right? I mean, if you have it for the two weeks, you know, I need it more, okay, I'm sorry, but you have to get that one emptied, and I'll have to put my name back on, so that Jeff has a chance to get his, he has the two weeks. It's almost like renting the library, right? 14-day rental, that's it? I don't know.
You know what it comes down to is, you know, you see me give a two-minute presentation, but we're talking six hours about it at back of the shop. We know what the market is and what it's like, and so we think that this is going to work for us. You know, I could have, you know, Karen and Paul come up here, you know, like.
No, you guys know, I just didn't know how long the waiting list, how quick it moves. It's just, it's two things you can do, either buy more containers or just limit the amount of time you have it. And like I said, you just go back on the list again, you know?
Right. We're sitting pretty good. We're just looking for that modest increase. It's really not holding up our business at all.
How will you communicate that? Is it just, is it on the website type of thing, or is it part of the application?
It'll be, we have a list of fees that we'll update, and people get that, and it'll be on the website, and everybody asks when, upon inquiry of a rental container, how much is it, how much is the tipping fee? So we give that out, and they make a decision, and, you know, it's competitive. We don't want to put proprietors out of business or other businesses out of business. This is basically what we like to do, is, just like everything else we do down at the Solid Waste, we encourage you to buy a sticker. So you buy that $65 a year, and that's pretty cheap. And with that, you get these kinds of benefits. So, you know, we're just trying to break even here. We're not trying to profit by this at all. Trying to make payroll and, but not put other people out of business either.
I mean, I guess all I would ask is that we try extra hard to make sure that people are aware of it. Maybe they've rented containers before, so we don't want to be, to be surprised, and then it becomes an issue after some period of time, and they realize the bill is more than they anticipated. That's all I would ask, but I'm sure you're making the right decision.
I have no questions.
Okay, so I guess, do I have a motion regarding the solid waste fee recommendation?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, item three, the water assessment report.
Something, if I can continue on here, the, something I feel obligated and have been for a while to do was catch your attention, get the attention, have other Board members, people listening, and really understand what's going on with our water system. Just to curb rough numbers, you know, there's 10,000 people in town, there's 23, 2,300 users, water users. And the economy's been good, and as a result, we see that in our own town. We see growth, and when we draw water and, in bringing it to people's houses from a public water system, we're, you know, under the watchful eyes of the DEP and the, and so forth. And there's permitting that goes along with water. I'm telling you guys nothing, but maybe other people that don't know this. But the permit allows for so much of a withdrawal, and the withdrawal is, the permit and the scale at which it goes over time and volume also goes parallel, we, as we estimate growth will. But growth has been, you know, the demand on water has been increasing along with the growth, and although we're staying within our permits, I don't know, to put it in layman's terms, the water that we're getting up here, now we've got to go a little bit deeper for. And I don't want anybody to excited, I say, you know, I just want to show the death of these wells if we continue to increase it without going out looking for new source and getting another well site on, onboard. But before I say too much, I'd like to introduce to you, if you can, and we have a slide presentation and talk about our water assessment report. First one we had done in 2013, we did it, we passed it around, and then since 2013 to now, we've had it revised just recently, and within the last days. And I have in the audience, Ryan Allgrove is with Environmental Partners, our consultants for water, and if I can, I'm going to ask Ryan to say hi and through the slideshow, bring us through the water assessment, where we stand today.
Can, just before Ryan goes, just housekeeping, can we just vote to close the hearing? Because we, we're done with the water rates.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And just before Ryan does that, I'm going to pass this out. This is exactly what he's representing, and if you can just pass that down.
My name's Ryan Allgrove.
Yeah, that just, it goes into, so people at home can hear you. It's not for us.
Like Bob mentioned, I work for Environmental Partners Group, Anne-Marie and I both do. We're consultants for the town. I'm going to talk about the water supply assessment. Basically summarizes the status of your two water, groundwater supplies, and compares it to your existing demands and the future demands, you know, projections based on growth for new development in the town. And then we've also been working on developing a new water supply for the town, Holbrook Street, and Anne-Marie's going to get into details of that specific project. So like I said, I'm going to talk about the assessment, or Anne-Marie's going to talk about the new well. In the assessment, basically, kind of break it down into three pieces. What are your demands now? What do we project them to be? What can your existing infrastructure, you know, physically take out of the ground? So the pumps themselves, you know, your wells, your oldest wells from the early 70s, your newer infrastructure, but you know.
Does that say seven or eight on the sound of that? Could you swap it with the seven?
Sure.
Or maybe speak a little bit louder, I'm not getting very clutched.
That's better. So there's two sides to water supply we looked at. One is, like I said, what you can physically get out of the ground with your infrastructure, and then two, you're, on the withdrawal side, what will DEP allow you to take out of the Charles River Basin that most of the town is in. So to give you some perspective, this is the town's water use going back to 2004. And you can see kind of in the middle, there's a hump there of the green, which is unaccounted for water. So there was a period of time where the, there was a lot of leaks, and, but, you know, the Water Division has gotten that under control. You can see the last four years, the unaccounted for water's been under 10%, which is what kind of the benchmark is as far as DEP is concerned. So, you know, between 400,000 gallons a day and a half a million gallons a day is where the town is sitting, and that fluctuates year to year based on the weather more than anything else. So that's kind of the, and that's an average over the entire year. This graph kind of shows you on a month-by-month basis, and as you can see, you know, summer usage is higher. Over the last five years, you know, it's ranged from 20% to 36% higher. And, you know, and that's, that's on the average between May and September. But obviously, there are some days, for example, 2015, you had a day where 930,000 gallons were pumped, and, you know, if you go back to your averages, so that's, that's about twice of what you would pump on a normal, on an average day. So, you know, obviously, the culprit in those cases, it's always in the summer, and the culprit is outdoor water use, watering, stuff like that. So you compare that, you know, a big day for the, for the water system of, you know, .9 MGD or a million gallons a day, and it's, it's good to compare that with the sources you have. So these are your, these are your two wells. You have the Spruce Road, Spruce Road facility and Gold Street, and they're both consist of two wells, kind of a primary well and a satellite well. And the top graph here, Spruce Road, that, that's the oldest source. That was actually designed originally for 500 gallons per minute. And as you can see on this graph, the red line is, you know, the flows in the last five years or so. You're, you're down below 300 gallons a minute right now, and that's due to the age of the well. You know, it's New England, there's iron and manganese in the ground, so the wells, over time, they just plug up, and, you know, the capacity of that well has degraded, you know, pretty significantly. And Gold Street on the bottom is, you're, it's a little bit, it wasn't permitted for as large a withdrawals as Spruce Road? I think it was permitted for an average maximum day withdrawal of 300 gallons a minute versus 500 at Spruce. But the town has had to rely on that well more and more as the capacity of Spruce has kind of dropped consistently. So, you know, reliably on a hot summer day, when everyone, you know, the highest usage in town, you can get, you know, .57 MGD out of Gold Street, .39 out of Spruce Road, and that gives you a combined total capacity in the system of just under a million gallons a day. So, you know, when Bob's sweating it out on those hot usage days, you can see, you know, you're basically just squeaking by. 9, .9, you're right in that million gallon day range is a high-usage day, and that's all you can really get out of the two well facilities. So, you know, obviously, that's, that's all you have, so you've got no redundancy built into the system, which, you know, usually when we do an analysis like this, we would usually say, take your largest well offline, and then can you still meet your maximum day? And in this case, in Norfolk, you know, there's no way. You're, you're, you know, you may get halfway there. So that, that's a major issue. You know, that, that benchmark of being able to meet your maximum day with one of your supplies offline, you know, you're not even close at this point. And, you know, having a well offline, that's, that's not like a, something that could happen that's totally inconceivable, you know? Power can go down, you know, pumps can break, so, you know, it can happen, and it probably has happened.
Said Al could make a mistake.
That's right.
Excuse, excuse me, Ryan. And just, just to be clear, obviously, it's not the best situation, but, you know, maybe you could just add some comment in terms of some of the, you know, surrounding communities. There is some capability that we do have. So just, I mean, if residents hear this, I mean, they're thinking that we're one.
Ryan, if you, if you don't mind, I'd like to just support something that Ryan said, and I just wanted to really be clear to everybody that, say, when we're out of the summertime, say from like November to April, this town uses on an average, don't hold me to the numbers, about 300,000 gallons of water every day. Once we get into the June, July, August, we spike up to between 500 and 700 gallons. We almost double, and on occasion, we'll go up to just under a million on one day. And you know what's, what's going on, and it's irrigations to the lawns. There's no sense in painting it any other way. People do fill their pools, that has a certain amount of impact on the water usage, but the, the lawns are, that, you know, and everybody wants water to lawn, and so don't I. It's just that we just don't have the water to support two towns of Norfolk. Basically, from 300,000 that we use in December, up to 700,000 that we use on the average during the summer when we need it the most, and there's usually, that's when the droughts occur, it's going on people's lawns. And I don't know if I'll ever be able to stop that. We should, you know, we've been talking about it, we need to get out there and enforce it, we certainly do. But people take great lawns and their, great pride in their properties. So when Ryan's done, and I don't mean to steal your thunder, we're going to talk about a new well site that we have coming on, but I just want to let you know that that's what's happening to our water system. We grab water from up here, and the more we use it, the lower we go, the static level goes down. If that bottoms out, then all the water's going to get dirty, because we're sucking mud. I've said it before to you, and stuff like that. And that's the reality of it. So it's important for planning, the ZBA, because there's a lot of 40Bs coming on, stuff like that. The town's growing, can we supply the water? Yeah, we can, but you don't see what's going on under the ground. And when that bottoms out, you know, it's, it's just going to be too late. To revive some of these wells, like Spruce Road, we, we clean the well. And that's a system where, you know, we'll, we'll go through the roof, and we go down, and we plunge the well. It's a huge operation where we, almost like plunging a toilet. You push out, that cone of influence gets filtered with manganese and minerals, and you push it out, and, and the water comes back in, and you push it out, and the water comes back in. But you can use that exercise so, so often until it's just.
You may show it to her.
It doesn't work.
You can see on the graph where those, you know, you just see the spikes, that's when the wells were redeveloped. So the capacity comes up, and then it drops off again. But like you said, every time it comes back up, it doesn't come up quite as high.
But just, just to Ryan's point, in terms of, you know, the fact that we're, certain times of the year, we're so close in terms of supply versus demand. And obviously, it's much more complicated than that, you know, with water bans, we took steps, there were things that were sent out to try to enforce, discourage and enforce, you know, the restrictions to the extent that we could. But, you know, beyond that, we do have, albeit at significant expense, some water available in emergency situations from neighboring communities. And I think it's worth the residents at least being aware that, you know, we have some Plan B, Plan C-type protection. Not the best situation, but, you know, certainly it's something.
No, you, you kind of asked me that, and I went out to something else, sorry about that. But the, I guess you want to call it good news, there is some good news. We have two interconnects with the Town of Franklin. We, one interconnect with the Town of Franklin, one interconnect with the Town of Rantham. The Town of Franklin has chloride in their water, so we haven't done that.
Chloride.
Chloride. What did I just say?
Chloride.
Fluoride, I'm sorry.
Okay.
And so we haven't used that, and there's a process for notifying people of fluoride in case we need that for emergency use. We do depend on our friends from Rantham quite often, when we're doing work, or we're down at a, at a pump site, a well site. But if we're down because we're short on water, because people are irrigating their lawns, the culprits, Rantham's going through the same thing, and they won't give us water.
Yeah, and that wasn't the essence of my point. It's more than a mechanical situation or something were to happen. There is some backup, if you will.
There is.
But I'm not talking about under conditions where there's a drought or something like that. That's not what I'm talking about.
There is, and if, when you're looking at redundancy, and I know what Ryan was talking about, you know, again, quite simply, we have two well sites, and we pump those well sites to homes on the way to our two 1 million gallon tanks. Those tanks supply us with redundancy, and they supply us with the pressure that forces the water out of your faucets. So like when we sleep at night, nobody's using a lot of water, the water trickles up and it fills those. So more important than any interconnect, that's our, that's our backup supply. But God forbid, and it can happen, that in the summer months, when we have those days where we're pumping 500 to 700 gallons for a week straight, those pumps are running 24 hours, seven days a week, and they continue to pump, and they're continuing to suck the static level of water down, where I made that example. And then the worst-case scenario will be, and I'm not trying to get anybody excited, but you need to know these facts, if we have a fire, because a fire could draw down one of those 1 million gallon tanks, which Ryan mentions are water demand, peak water demand. How do you explain that?
Peak daily demand?
Right, so we have the, you know, the perfect storm could be, and again, and not to worry anybody that this, but it could happen. We have drought, we have a fire, and we're already pumping 500 to 700 gallons a day. That fire will take one of those tanks and bring it down to, you know, till there is no pressure in that tank, and we get a little bit of worry. That's when we go to our interconnects. That's when we go to our interconnects for, you know, survival tactics. But, but again, there's good news at the end of this, and that's when we'll get into the, the new well site.
Before Ryan goes on, Bob, just for, you know, kind of reference, I don't want to say comparison of towns, obviously, we're, we're short on wells compared to some of our neighbors. Like, for, a system has 23, 240 users, what do you normally see for number of wells in production? You know what I mean? I know, like Franklin's blessed with maybe five, six, seven wells, because they've been in the well business a lot longer than us, but do you know what I mean? Like, for a community that has 23 users, I know we have the potential to have a lot more than that with oncoming stuff.
Franklin has 14 wells.
You know what I mean, so what is, is that a number, Ryan, that's not available, but just off the cuff?
I mean, every town's different, you know, because aquifers can change so much, but, you know, usually three or four, I would say, would be kind of where most towns of this size would be. And it's basically for that redundancy. So, you can take one down, and you can replace it with another well while you're cleaning it or doing whatever. So, I think redundancy is, is the big, big issue that, you know, I think this, this presentation's trying to drive home. And, and Bob's exactly right, you know, there is a, obviously, there's a Plan B, there's interconnections, and the tanks, you know, the town has adequate storage, and you've got, you know, two tanks, and, you know, part of the reason they're there is to balance that, that fluctuation, so take some of the curse out of those big days. But, you know, you get a, a week of really big days in a row, and then, you know, the storage just keeps dropping, and that's when you can run into issues.
So, besides more wells, what about, we ever thought about adding more tanks? And I know, like, that's a huge cost, too, but why not have 10 tanks?
That's the next place I think we'll, we might want to look at.
I know it costs, I mean, it's not free at all, but, you know, store up, store up 10 million gallons of water. You know, especially the nighttime, as it trickles, I don't know how quick it trickles.
Yeah, the only, the only thing I would say about that is, water storage affects water quality more than anything else, so if you get 10 tanks and you're only turning them over, especially in the winter, you know, all that water's just sitting there, and that can affect your water quality. So, it's, it's a balancing act.
You'd have a program, I would think, to kind of, I don't, I don't want to say wastewater, but turn them over on purpose.
But it would be a good idea to put them on during the course of a fire. It would be there for that.
Yeah.
So, we're not talking 10 tanks, but three tanks wouldn't be out of the question. We get a lot of storage now for a small town, right now.
Bob, we've talked about irrigation systems endlessly, and last year, we put in, before the summer, we put in a, an effort to try and control that. Was it at all successful? And we know we have hundreds of homes that have irrigation systems that are on our water system, which is in violation of our bylaws. Did we see any results from that effort?
We did, and I'm continuously bugging Jack, and Jack puts out a 911. This goes into such a long story, but we can monitor through our SCADA system and through our KP system, so-
We know where they are.
And we know what's going on, and we know who's got the systems because we can see their particular meter, and we read it all the time. So, on the system, when our foreman, Al Finney, goes in the morning at 6:30, he's sitting at his desk, the system will notify us of somebody that might be using 1,000 gallons or more in a day. We call it critical use. We could drop that down to five, we can drop, bring it up to 2,000. So, we say, is it 500, Al, that we put it on, or 1,000?
We're at 1,000.
We're at 1,000. So, when somebody's got it on 1,000, it's not that we're trying to be water police or anything like that, it's more that somebody might have a toilet running, they might be on vacation, and, and we've saved so many people because of, they've either had, you know, a leak in their house, we've had basements fill up to the basement window. So, the system tells us what's going on, but to answer your question more specifically, we find quite a bit of confrontation, because when we know what's going on, you know, people will fight back, but-
They're violating the law, or our bylaws.
Yes, yes, they are, it's-
It's as simple as that, right?
It's not a common court case, you know, usually, you know, there's criminal activity, but this is so hard to call criminal, but-
I mean, nobody, you know, we're here to help, not to hurt, but-
Right.
But we've talked about this a long time, and, and we know that that is the primary culprit for a period of three to four months.
Sure is.
We know it. We know the issue, and our wells are not improving. They're getting a little bit tighter as time goes on. I mean, we, I, I would ask you to give some thought on, on what else we can do on those situations to make it even more onerous for, for folks to violate this bylaw, because it isn't, they're compromising the town by violating that bylaw. And the other question I have is, somebody's installing these things, you know?
New subdivisions. You don't see a subdivision without sprinklers.
Well, a lot of, some subdivisions have wells, you know, I mean, there are folks that put in private wells for irrigation.
Some.
Some, and, and that's their privilege. But I, I just, I've been talking about this for a long time, I would like to see us find some way to get more meaningful results in trying to stop this, because it is, it's getting worse, and our situation is becoming quite compromised, because I know you're going to talk about these wells, but this is several years away, and, and-
Somebody's going to be hot, yeah.
So, we, we've got to do something, I think. It's just my opinion, but I think we've got to get a little bit more firm-
Yeah, no, we talked about this before.
You knew it was going to be confrontation, you knew that.
My feeling was that i- if it can be done in a way that is objective, where there's an algorithm that, you know, is looking at what typical, you know, the average rate is, or if the rate spikes to a level where it's clear, and the threshold is going to be the same for everybody, so regardless of who the resident is, if they fall into that spectrum in terms of whatever it is that triggers some type of action, then so be it. Then it's, it's, it's objective, and, you know, no one, none of us can, can, can claim that there's anything subjective about it. There's a certain metric that you use and you react to, and, and that, end of story.
So, if I understand you, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you. If I understand it, so you want us to pursue a billing option for, for, you know, if we can identify with Al's system, and I, and I made a joke at Al's expense earlier, I apologize. Al's, Al's a big, give Al a lot of credit for helping finding the leaks and solving many of our problems in the water division, so thank you, Al. But if we can use Al's system to identify spike users, whether it be on a daily basis or a weekly basis maybe, are you okay with us coming back to you and proposing some type of a, a fine that goes on to their bill? Because that's probably, you know, we've had, we've had, as Bob said, we get a lot of resistance when we, when we go tell somebody to, you know, change their sprinkling, you know, their water habit, their water use habit. You know, some people will see change for a little while, and then will, will, they'll, they'll either, you know, a week will go by, and they'll, they'll resume when they don't think we're looking anymore, or, or otherwise, other people will just say, no, I'm not going to change.
It, it's, it's a combination, I mean, I would say brainstorm whatever options you think might work. I, I wouldn't limit it to a single resource. I, I would, I don't know what might or might not work to, I've seen sprinkler systems on at 2 o'clock in the afternoon and a 95-degree day, which is ridiculous because it's doing nothing for the lawn, in fact, it's probably burning the lawn in all actuality, and it's evaporating faster than it gets into the ground. I mean, that's just absolute being thoughtless as to what they're doing. And it is, it is causing the town, at whole, a problem. And I, it, I don't know, as I said, I've talked about this for years, and we've never found a solution. I just think we've got to get tougher on this, because we've got 200 people compromising 2,500 people.
Fines, yes. Jack, also, I mean, is it, can it be under, like, can it become a planning board or slash Bob book, or inspection issue, like, when he goes out and inspects houses, if he sees an air, he sees a irrigation system, it should be a requirement that that has to be a permit pulled, or a thing has to be a corresponding irrigation well, otherwise, it's not allowed to stop it. So, stop it now, new, right? Can we not do that, or is that not legally, you know what I'm saying?
Look at it, I'm not-
Do we have the ability to, to fine the people that put the systems in, knowing that they're doing it illegally?
The, the problem we've had historically is the clerk, and Al may be able to speak to this to some degree as well, but the problem we've had, and this has been kind of a regional look at this, and Franklin had a lot of experience with this, was you start fining people, and, and the clerk over at the court really doesn't want anything to do with it.
So, they just throw it out?
And we'll throw it out. So, so the fining process is, they just, and, you know, I can understand, they, they got more important stuff they want to deal with, they don't want to deal with these little municipal fines. I would rather, and we, I think Al had suggested at the end of last year, talk about-
Put it on the bill.
Put it on the bill, and then they, then they can, they can try and, you know, come to us for an abatement if they think they've got a legitimate reason as to why their, their bill spiked.
What about the inspection, what about though, again, at the, at the inspection level of the house? Does it have to be a final inspection? And, I mean, I know we're not looking at that, right? I mean, you guys are-
I can talk about it with Bob, yeah, lots of times, the lawns are being put in a month
after they're, you know, it's a punch list item, you know, there's holdbacks and whatever, but it's, they're already got occupancy, so it's-
Well, I mean, clearly, this is important, because we're facing some supply-demand, serious supply-demand issue, so, you know, we're going to have to spend some more time on it. So, you know, if there's some metric we can come, come up with that would trigger whatever the action is that DPW recommends to, to Jack, make your recommendation, and then we can review it, you know, whether it's some verification prior to fine or, you know, write to a fine, I'm not sure, we need to deliberate on that, so, sorry.
We could go on with that, but Ryan, you've given up the energy.
Did you remember where you were?
So, that kind of concludes the, the nuts and bolts, what you can get out of the ground versus what the town consumes. The other, you know, the other side of, the other coin is what DEP will allow you to take out of the ground through your Water Management Act permit. The table on top here shows what, what you're allowed to take out with your current permit, so .53 MGD till 2019, then it steps up to .57 MGD until 2024, and then through the end of your permit in 2029, the last five years, it bumps up to 630,000 gallons a day. So, we, we took that, took the piece that's allocated for residential use, because some of that usage goes towards unaccounted-for water, some of it goes towards commercial usage. But in Norfolk, it's, it's like 80-something percent is residential, it's mostly residential in town. So, we looked at that and said, okay, how many services could we potentially fit in based on what DEP is going to allow? And if you go in the, the bottom table, you know, to kind of cut to the chase, you know, with your Water Management Act permit at the end, 2000, in 2029, you know, at that point, you could sustain, you know, we came up with a number of 911 additional residential services. So, that'd be over the next 12 years. Now, we compared that to potential services that are already on the books in town, so that would be, you know, we got a list of subdivisions from the planning department, and also, there's a lot of houses in town that have a water man right in front of their house, but they're not hooked up yet, and they could kind of request to be hooked up at any point. So, added all those up, and we came up with a number of 816. So, you know, theoretically, under the existing Water Management Act permit, you, there's enough capacity there to handle what's on the books. You know, obviously, 12 years is a long way out, a law can happen in 12 years. So, so that's kind of a theoretical number. And this graph kind of summarizes all that, because, you know, really, the, it's all about the timing, so your existing pace over the last, you know, four or five years, you've been doing about 50 new services a year. So, in this graph, that's kind of the, the brown squares, the, the blue diamonds is the historical numbers of services. So, if you stay at that pace-
Acquires townhood.
The, the green steps there, that's your Water Management Act permit. So, if you stay at your pace, you'll, you'll cruise under that, and you'll be okay. Now, if you have a year where there's 200 or 300 services, you know, some big subdivision or whatever comes in, you know, that thing's going to shoot up, and you're going to be in violation of your Water Management Act permit. So, and that, this potential growth, you know, the red dotted line there, kind of accelerated growth, and we included, you know, Bob's made me aware that there's some bigger subdivisions out there that, you know, aren't necessarily, you know, on the books, is what I'm calling it, but, you know, they could happen, 500 units, stuff like that, you know? The Water Management Act, you know, on top of the, the stuff that we know about, probably couldn't sustain, you know, another 500 units on top of that. You know, you'll be above your Water Management Act permit in, in violation. So, I, I think, you know, the key, what we're trying to get across here is that, you know, keeping track of how many things are coming in, and making sure that you're not varying wildly from, you know, what you've been trending is important, because, like I said, you get a couple of big years in a row of, you know, 150, 200 units, and you could easily go over your permitted withdrawals.
Excuse me, just a question, correct me if I'm wrong, but you folks did the report four years ago as well, correct?
Yeah.
So, I, I think the information is quite consistent with what it was. Now, we may not have had some of these major projects on the horizon at that time, and maybe that's the biggest difference between this report, where I think we're coming to the realization that there may be some very significant growth in our community here over the next few years. But, I mean, could you highlight any other appreciable differences between the report four years ago?
I think, I think one of the, the biggest difference that I found is that in 2000, whenever it was, 2013, the assumption, because unaccounted-for water was just getting under control, we assumed that it was going to be at 15% moving forward, and now that, you know, we've got a few more years under, under your belts, and you've shown that, you know, you're, you're containing it within 10%, we lowered that to 10%. And I wish I had a graph that shows you the difference, but it makes, it makes a huge difference, that 5% of water that you're, you're saving every year by doing leak detection and all that other good stuff. You know, it, it basically, it would kind of like shift that whole graph, so you'd be bumping up right against the, the corners of the green, green line where you get those steps, it would, it makes a big difference.
Just to stay with that question, the most appreciable difference is that our wells are in decline. So, growth goes like this, wells goes like that. And you might see the water coming out of the ground, but you don't know how low we're going there, so the wells are not, for instance, Ryan was telling you that we're permitted for like 500 gallons, 500,000 gallons a day at Spruce Road. We're only, Al, what are we asking of that well every day at Spruce? How many gallons? 250?
For a minute, for a minute-
No, no, how much are we pumping? How much are we asking to give, what?
We're pumping, I want to say, 125,000 a day.
A day. It's permitted for five.
But that's one of the recommendations, it seems like that's a simple swap, other than interfering with the act of, I don't understand why it's hard with the DEP to recognize that and just flip it to Gold Street, which is more productive, and just say, you know, we, we're permitted at X number, I know it's pointing a different direction.
Well, I've asked, and, correct me if I'm wrong, well, I've asked, I asked that simple question, too.
Yeah, it's a simple question, but-
But part of the, part of the rationale, I mean, we'd have, we'd have to go get Gold Street retested again, do all the, the five-day maximum pump testing, because, and, and set up all the, the wells, you know, the, look at all the impact to the, to that whole region, because, you know, when they permit us for whatever level-
It's based on the test.
They know how much, yeah, we're going to pull from there, so it's, it's-
I know, it's not easy, but, I mean, they're the ones that give us this limit, I mean, it's just-
It's one of the things that we're going to try to do anyways.
I saw that in your recommendation, sorry to jump ahead, but-
Yeah, we're going to try to do that. But the thing is, if you combine them, it does, it just doesn't matter. I mean, Gold Street isn't getting better.
No, I know what you mean.
And if it's leveling off, the other one's going down, so you net less.
Right.
And it's, it's not a good feeling, you know, and then you get into a drought and that, all that ugly stuff that I was talking to you about. But that's the probably, good, good question, because that's the thing that we need to pay attention to.
Bob, wouldn't you, wouldn't you agree that actually, I think the risk is a little greater than what you're really, you're assuming a level growth in your analysis. I'm looking at the 816 people that are already out there that have the ability to connect. Now, we've had a bylaw on the books that require all new homes to connect to town water for how long? Does anybody remember how long?
15 years.
10 or 15 years. So, all of these homes that are in wells predate that bylaw in most instances. I'm an example of that. I've, I've been in my house for 25 years, I'm on well because there was no town water at the time. I now have town water down my road, I'm not connected, but I could, and if my well failed, I would. So, the majority of these homes are 15, 20, 25, 30, or older.
Right.
And so, therefore, are more susceptible to a failed well.
That's right.
So, I would think logic would tell us that that risk line has increased, and that those 816 people that have the ability to connect but have chosen not to at this point because their wells are so serviceable, and I, I know we just had a couple of those recently. We had to go out in an emergency situation on one particular resident because their well failed. I think that's gonna increase, which dramatically increases our exposure when you relate it to our growth.
Right. If you kinda go back a slide, the bottom, you know, each one of those five-year blocks of your Water Management Act permit, and we have a, a maximum number of new connections you could, you could handle during that period. So, like, you know, 911 is, is the final number, but there's two intermediate numbers that are also numbers you're gonna wanna pay attention to as, you know, the requests for new services come in.
And what happens if we go over the number?
I was just gonna ask that crazy question. It's gonna shut us off somewhere.
Well...
I mean, I'm talking about from, from the DEP's perspective, not, you know, the, the obvious concern we can see locally, but what, what happens if we exceed what they tell us we can have? Let's say we planned that 50 growth, and that line continues to creep up, and then all of a sudden, 500 of those 816 go online. We're, we're, we're well over that number.
Yeah, I mean, you're gonna have to sit down with DEP and explain to them why, why you went over, and, you know, they're gonna ask you to, you know, they're, the, the Water Management Act permitting has gone through a radical change in kind of the last couple of years. They've, they've got all these initiatives that they're asking towns to do now. They call them mitigation, and... What's the other one, Amberie?
Conservation.
But anyways, they, they've got a list of things they ask towns to do, especially when they redo their Water Management Act permits and they're asking for more water. And, you know, it's, it's things like getting rid of impervious area, or, you know, having buyback programs for low-flow toilets and sinks and faucets and stuff like that. So, there is a, DEP's got a list of stuff that they recommend to towns to, to lower their water usage, but, you know, there would probably be some negotiation as to what the solution is.
Basically, it's unfunded mandates that they're gonna come at us with, and eventually, if we don't meet it, I, I know they have the capability to find us. I'm not sure they do that all that often, but...
It's almost like the way we don't find overused water uses. It's almost like, try it out. You go over...
No, but, but they're gonna force us to do some of the things that Ryan's talking about, you know, conservation and restriction and change. They're gonna force us to change bylaw, you know, put in restrictive bylaws that, you know, and force the, they could force the town to spend money on, you know, providing low-flow systems to people.
Just to conserve, okay.
They're gonna ask us, and this is why I'm glad Walter's here, and the planning board should hear this, is why did you grow faster than your permitted amounts? So, there's a planning tool here. It's called a planning board. And before you go ahead and approve, you know, subdivision after sub, and it's not their fault, it's our job to tell them about the water assessment report. Before we go on and we put on more 40Bs, 40 units here, 500 units, say, at Southwood or something like that, another 40 here, another subdivision, do we have the water for it? And that question's gonna be asked before we can approve subdivisions.
Well, that's the ZBA in terms of the 40Bs.
It is.
And they're constrained. I mean, it's not as though that they can act, you know, in an autonomous fashion.
But if, if, if we don't tell them, I feel like my responsibility, if we don't tell them, how are they gonna know? Everybody goes through life thinking there's plenty of water. We've grew up thinking that, but things are changing a little bit, and you need to know that, and your tools for planning.
Yeah, Walter, I'm sorry, you wanted to...
I just wanted to mention that in addition to the 800 potential existing users who could hook up, as part of the growth that we are looking at, either approved or in the pipeline of the 40B developments, of which I think there are six, there are just over 380 units that are gonna come online in the next couple of years.
Now, what's that gonna do to that graph? Because that blue graph...
Yeah, we had, any subdivision that was...
Okay, we're just constructing.
Yeah, right. We had included that in the 816. Anything that was in the subdivision as of like November of 2016, when we got an updated list.
But none of those are inclusive of the 40Bs?
Some of them, some of them.
One, I think one. I think only one is in that list.
If you look in the, there's like an appendix to the, to the memo, and it lists, it breaks down exactly where that number comes from.
Okay.
Kind of street by street. You can see...
What are you talking about, 816?
Yeah. So, there was a certain amount of that is houses that just aren't hooked up, and a certain amount of that is big subdivisions.
Right, but he, he's just saying that as of November, lots happened since November, unfortunately, unfortunately, since November 2016 with these, as Walter pointed out, 40Bs, right?
You're not seeing, I don't think you're seeing it yet.
I don't think it's seen in there. I think it's...
Well, you've got Boyd's Crossing in here.
Yeah, and they've got Lakeland Farms.
And they've got Lakeland Farms.
Okay, I mean, maybe they do, yeah.
This one?
I, I can't hear you. I'm sorry.
She's trying to tell, tell Ryan. She works with Ryan.
I still wanna hear her. Oh, Boyd's is on Main Street. Lakeland Farms is off of...
Well, yeah, basically, you know, between now and 2019...
The placenta's not in here.
...we have 385 new services.
Look, look on Lawrence.
And between 2019 and 2024, you can handle about another 300. So, total of 595 services.
You don't have the Lawrence Street plan in here.
No, 'cause he, he has through November, he said, so that came in.
Yeah, so, that, the Lawrence Street is one of the, kind of those big developments that I included for this, you know, potential growth line here that shows...
Shows us out of, out of whack.
Where, where it could go, you know, if everything kind of hits in the next 10, 12 years.
Well, five years on your graph.
The obvious question.
Here's, it'd be even worse. Make that, makes that red line steeper.
Okay, so the situation versus four years ago, maybe more serious than that because of the nature of some of the significant developments, and maybe the condition of the line wells in terms of the...
I think it outweighs everything else.
Efficiency productivity is perhaps somewhat less.
Yeah, I think the, the lack of redundancy is number one in my mind to tackle. And then, you know, obviously, the growth, you have to track it and plan for it.
Bob, is there any value in our reconsidering our bylaw that may, I know why we did it, and I understand the logic of it, so that we can get the unit connecting of all the systems and all of that. It was the right reason at the right time to require all new developments to go onto town water. And I know that, that wells have a different impact on the system than what we currently do in terms of the town water component. One, they're separate. One does not impact the other. Does it make sense to reconsider that bylaw?
Trying to, you're, again, can you simplify that? What you're asking?
Would it, would it make sense for us to reconsider the bylaw that mandates that all new developments connect to town water? And other than someone builds a home, could they have a private well and not have to connect to town water?
It's a consideration.
Would it, would it make sense to consider that? Because it has a different impact on our water system.
It, it certainly would be a, a great, I would think it would be a great consideration.
It may be a necessary consideration.
You know, wouldn't, it wouldn't stunt our growth.
No, it wouldn't.
And it would save our water, because, you know, we could break these permit laws and stuff like that, and you can't break it if you don't have the water.
Right. This is of a less concern. It's a matter of running out.
It's a matter of running out.
That's all it amounts to.
Rip that up.
So, it seems to me that might be something, 'cause from what you have explained to me in the past, there's a very distinctly different impact. The, the private well does not have the same impact on the AquaFir that our system has. And...
Well, there's, there's some thoughts on that.
So, there's an effort, there is an effort, obviously, through the conservation groups, you know, the Charles River Watershed, you know, Association.
Rivers, yep.
But there's also, there's even a group of communities that are, have gotten together to, to try and look at whether or not there should be...
Regulations.
Restrictions on, on, on private wells. So, that, you know, I, I'm sure that that is coming at some point. You know, because, because the bigger picture is not just, you know, our municipal...
Well, it's water.
Yeah, it's, it's, it's water. It's not just our municipal well, so that would spread the pain, and, and it would solve, yes, it would solve part of our problem too.
Part of the problem, actually.
But, but it would, you know, but then all of a sudden, if we have 1,000 more private wells, what's the impact on the, that are, that are unmonitored, unrestricted? What's the impact on the AquaFir?
Well, they don't necessarily have to be unrestricted, 'cause I just saw Rentham talked about when they go to that total ban status. They're, they're considering an amendment, I think, to when, like, you know, we have water ban, you know, I, I have a well, so I can wash my car, do what I want. Rentham is in the process of considering, I thought, of carrying that through. So, when we do a water ban like we do for our water uses on our system, it applies to private well owners. I think that's allowed under law. Now...
We have a, Jack and I were just studying something that came across our table. It's a, it's a blueprint for a bylaw that, that goes into private wells and the use of private wells specifically during state and federal drought times.
Yeah, Rentham's in here.
And we thought it was, it just came across our table that it wouldn't be, you know, timely right now to be putting that in front of the, the warrant for upgrade our bylaw, but...
Yeah, I mean, I don't know. Maybe it's, maybe it's only in drought conditions.
Last year was a big scare. That drought last year, I think we're partially in still.
Yeah.
Scared a lot of people and a lot of, a lot of new stuff going on with water.
I think I'm ready for the silver lining, Bob.
Yeah, yeah.
How much more time there, Ryan?
Uh, I mean, these are kind of the, the meat and potatoes of the recommendation, but I think we've more or less covered it all through our discussion. You know, develop Holbrook Street as fast as you can. Don't stop there. I would say, continue searching for new water supplies as the other ones get worse, you know, to mitigate those losses. You know, planning for the, the future water service connections. One thing that wasn't touched on that we recommended was considering seasonal rates, which some towns have used to combat high summer usage. So, that's a, the, the rates for water go up in the summer, you know. That's just an incentive to keep your, keep your usage reasonable. And then, one thing that was mentioned was the Franklin interconnection. Since Franklin is fluoridated, there would need to be a town meeting vote to allow that, you know, initiated, I think, by the Board of Health. So, that's another item to consider. So, I'll, I'll turn it over to the silver lining now.
Thank you.
Amberie's got all the good news.
Thank you, Ryan.
Thanks, Ryan. This is good guy, bad guy? Bad guy, good guy?
Yeah, bad guy's leading.
Bad guy, good guy? Or good lady?
Hey, Al, is there a reason why you came in with bottled water?
All right, so, we started in 2015 working on the new source water supply. And our goal here was, you know, kind of following up on what Ryan said, to replace the diminishing capacity at the existing water supply sources, enable the town to meet their current peak day demands in the summer with either of its water supply offline. Again, those are pretty big weaknesses in the system. We need to eliminate the need for town to purchase water from the neighboring towns and then ensure water for the town's current list of future potential new water connections and support additional growth for the town. So, we're looking for, obviously, new sources. All right, so just to give you a little background, we started with a desktop study. We looked at the town, and we looked where the town owned enough land to develop a water supply. And then, based on that, we looked where there could be potential aquifer material to develop. And the red circles narrowed down where we would look for water supplies. We did do exploration in 2015 at the Stop River site, which is on the right side, the Campbell State Forest, and the Grove Street site, which is over here. Those three sites had shallow bedrock, no aquifer. So, we, at that point, the Holbrook Street site became available. So, we looked at that site. We've also done some work at the Lawrence Street site. And Lawrence Street is still available. It had some issues when we did some testing, so now we're looking, the Holbrook Street had a lot more potential, so that's kind of the direction we're going. So, getting into the Holbrook Street site, I'll give you an update on what we've done to date, and then I'll kind of go into the detail on the site. The site is located, as you can see in that little red box, it's on the Millis Norfolk Town Line. The Charles River runs just to the north of that property, and then we've got power line easement running to the south of the property. What we've done to date is we did all the exploration to locate a well field on the property. We submitted a request for site exam and a pump test proposal to DEP in February 2017. So, that's the first step in trying to permit a new water supply source. We're expecting possible DEP comments in April of 2017. At that point, what DEP's gonna wanna do is meet with us, go out to the site, look at the site, and decide if there are any issues. And she's looking, Susan Connor is our representative at DEP, and she's looking to maybe schedule that in early April. So, we're trying to keep the project moving. And in our pump test report, just to give you the bottom line, we're looking to request a pumping rate for the well field of 0.7 million gallons a day, or 700,000 gallons a, a day. So, a little background, this is the Holbrook Street site, and you can see the yellow border followed by the red border shows the Braun property. So, that's all the property we have. And DEP, one of the things they require, if you're gonna do a single well on the site, that the town needs to own and control the 400-foot radius around that well. That's a protective radius on the well. That's if you wanna produce for, you know, what the well can actually produce. And so, we looked at the site. We drew all those circles to see where could we locate a site where we have a single well and we can pump just one well. And that turns out to be location two. So, that was the only place on the property you could put a single well field. The wa, when we drilled that well, the water table's at about 10 feet below ground surface. Now, what becomes important here is how much water is available to pump. The water table's at 10 feet below ground surface, bedrock's at 40 to 45 feet, and our best aquifer was 30 to 40 feet. So, that leaves us about 20 feet of water total that you could pump above the well screen. Based on what we measured for aquifer conditions, a single well at the site could produce somewhere around 200 gallons a minute, which is, you know, not a lot of water, but it would, you know, it's something. So, at that point, we realized, okay, the water table's shallow, the aquifer's shallow, let's look at a well field. Because, and I've posted here what DEP requirements are for a well field, and those are, a well field has to have a minimum of three wells pumping at all times. The wells have to be less than 50 feet apart. They don't want you to put in a big well that's gonna produce a lot of water and have all these wells and consider them a well field. The difference is, you only need 250-foot zone one around the property. So, we put in a bunch of wells at the site, and the red line shows where your zone one would be for a well field. So, you can do a lot more wells. And we put in and tested six wells on the property. And without getting too into the details, the bottom, the last number on those bullets says, says what each well could yield.
I don't have an answer, so...
And it's highly variable.
That's the circle I'm seeing, right?
It's highly variable what these wells could yield. If you look at the top well, which is OW2, that well could produce about 8.5 gallons a minute. So, we lost a lot of aquifer in that direction. But if we look down here at OW3, that well can produce 323 gallons a minute. So, it's a much better well. More, those are similar to what you'd see closer to Gold Street. So, it ranged in between. And as a well field, we would have to pick at least three wells. If you have more than three wells, it's better for permitting. So, again, and just so you know, this is a little geology background, what we're looking here, our river sands, gravels, and silts and clay. So, we're looking for areas with a channel sand with a lot of sand and gravel. So, the next question, we wanted to confirm that what would we produce if we did go with a well field compared to a well? And we decided to go with a groundwater model. We took all the data from our pump tests and evaluated what the aquifer conditions are that we could put into a groundwater model. What is the groundwater flow at the site? And we knew we would need this if we wanna permit the well to get our, we'd have to do a zone one, a zone two analysis of the well field. So, this rolled into our zone two. And just to give a little credit, we work with McLean Environmental in Princeton, New Jersey. They're, they've been doing groundwater modeling for 25, 30 years, and the best groundwater models I've ever worked with, so very reliable data, put it that way. This shows where the model was, and the other figure kind of shows you where groundwater's flowing. The star is where the site is. You can see, obviously, groundwater's flowing from south to north, goes downhill towards the Charles River. So, we need that, we needed that in our model. And like I said, the first thing we wanted to look at is, how much could we produce if we went with a well field versus a single well? And I've tried to summarize it into two graphs. There's a lot of data on here. On the x-axis, it shows what the aquifer characteristics are, and as you go to the right, the aquifer is getting better. We have a lot of data, so it's variable what the aquifer's like. The other thing that we found, and this may be affecting some of the other well fields, is depending on where your water table is, you could reduce how much water you have to pump. So, in a drought condi- So in a drought condition, you might have 15, the water table might be at five feet below ground. When you have a drought, it could be 15 feet below ground. So you could lose up to 20% of your water that you can pump if you have drought conditions. So that is very, that affects how much water we could pump. So then in the top graph, I looked at what a single well field would produce. And in the bottom graph, I looked at what five wells would produce. And that's kind of what we're looking at to produce here. What it says is, the more wells you have, the more water you can produce. And in this case, the orange line in the middle?
So maybe, it's maybe more of a blob question. Is it instinctively obvious that if it's a five wells, it's five times the cost? Or is it gonna, even though we need more water, is it gonna be five times the cost?
Well, no, you have to put in five wells.
Right.
But, um...
Well, cost, Bob, I mean?
And pumps, but that's...
It's not, that's not...
It doesn't go one for one, but?
It is more, but it doesn't work, you know? It doesn't double, triple, or...
Okay. It's gonna cost more than...
Yeah, that's your upfront cost to put in a well.
Right.
So you have a little more to put in the wells and put in the pumps, but once it's running, it all goes into a pump house. You have to run them together, and you have to manifold them all together before you bring it out to the system. So that, that's a requirement of DEP. But in this case, so if you put in one well, and I'd say, look at the middle graph. It says the water table's at 10 feet. I'd go right to the middle of the line where the middle dot is, that's your average aquifer conditions. For a single well, you're looking at producing under 300,000 gallons a day, or .3 million gallons a day. With a five-well field, you know, an average condition, you can produce more like .5 million gallons a day, 500,000 gallons, with a potential of producing up to 700,000 gallons a day when you're looking at higher water conditions. So that said to me that the, it's better to go for a well field because we really need that amount of water. And in all cases, you know, even at the minimum case, it's gonna help us. There's no doubt about it. It gives us enough water to match one of your existing well fields. So at that point, we went forward with a request for site exam to DEP, and these are all requirements of DEP. So just to give you an idea where the well field sits and what the conditions are. The orange box shows the property, and the blue dots are where our wells are. You can see that the land within a half a mile of the property consists mostly of cropland. It's Chapter 61A land. I know we've talked about that a little bit. There's forests, forest wetlands, low-density residential. We do have the power line easement to the south, and we have multifamily residential, just that one area to the east of the property. So all these, these uses are consistent with what DEP requires for a water supply. And then we looked at what potential environmental receptors are in the well field area. One is that the site's located in a rare wetland wildlife habitat, and we did request from NESHAP what, what the conditions are, what the wetland wildlife habitat is. We're waiting to hear back. I think, Bob, they're gonna let you know. They should send you a letter, but we need that. The little purple salamanders are vernal pools. There are some nearby, but there's none right at the immediate site conditions. We are located in the Charles River watershed, which is a stressed water supply basin. A lot of people are pulling water from there. So we're gonna have to work with DEP. But I will say, you know, we met with DEP in the fall, and DEP was happy to find out that Norfolk has another site, that they are looking for a redundant water supply source, and, you know, they have something to move forward with that, you know, does have a lot of potential. The other thing we can see at the very bottom of the gra, of the map is the Gold Street well. So it's right on that line, so it's about a half a mile away. And then, as I said, DEP requires in your request for site exam that you map your preliminary Zone 2. This is a zoning that the town will have to implement bylaws to restrict land uses within that area. They also want to know what, what is existing in the Zone 2. And just to give you a little background, so the Zone 2 is calculated, you, and it's done with the groundwater model. You pump your well at your permitted pumping rate. In this case, it's .7 million gallons a day for 180 days with no recharge to the aquifer. So we're looking at extreme drought conditions. And then using the model, where are you gonna be getting the water from? Where does the water come from? And we put particles out and pumped the well, and that shows the area where they, the well brought in particles. Very similar to what we saw in the previous land use map, and it's all consistent with what DEP requires for a Zone 2. Cropland, forest, forested wetlands, low-density residential, power line easement. So that was all consistent. The one thing that did come up, this is, in red shows where our Zone 2 is for the Holbrook Street site, and that blue blob is the Zone 2 for the Gold Street well. So they do overlap, and usually what happens in those situations is one will get shifted because they both can't have the same water. So once we do the pump test and we've looked at the data, we can figure out better what's gonna happen with the Gold Street versus this Zone 2. So as part of the request for site exam, we submitted this pump test proposal to DEP. It's gonna be a five-day pump test. That's what we proposed. We did a screening. DEP could come back and ask for a 15-day pump test because we're near the Charles River, but nothing in their screening protocol requires a 15-day. So we're proposing a five-day pump test, pumping at 700,000 gallons a minute. That assumes we're gonna do the pump test in the spring when water levels are high because if it's in the summer when we have low water, you can't permit as much water. That's another reason we want to try to get this done in the spring, because your permitted capacity's gonna be based on what you pump your wells at and what your water levels are. So we're looking to add one additional test well, so we would have five test wells. All, again, all of them located within 50 feet of each other. And then we put in, the yellow dots are observation wells that we're gonna put in in order to evaluate how far out the pumping of the well field's gonna draw down the water table. Again, being close to the Charles River, that's gonna be something that's gonna be of concern. We have one well that's right there at the property line, as close to the Charles River as we can get, again, to see what impacts might be in that direction. We're proposing to put two pismeters in the Charles River. We want to understand the hydrology there. This is all gonna be important information when we go back to DEP and submit our pump test report and try to permit the well field. And then another pismeter in the wetland area. And then the last thing, we're proposing at this point to discharge our water from the pump test. This is a lot of water we're pumping into the Charles River through this parcel over here, which is also owned by Braun. So we're looking to discharge to the Charles River, and we'll have to go through the Millis Conservation Commission to get permission to do that. So that's the summary of what we're proposing to do. This is our schedule. We're hoping in spring 2017 to install all of our test wells, our pismeters, and our observation wells. We'd like to get that done in April. After we meet with DEP, we're gonna wait till they give us an approval or comments, get those in so we're ready to go. And then in fiscal year 2018, hopefully in the May timeframe, we do our five-day pump test while water levels are still high. And then in the other requirements under permitting the well field, we have to prepare our pump test report, submit it to DEP. We have to do our management act, the middles, Water Management Act, just amend the permit to add this water supply, prepare an environmental notification form that has to go into the MIPA. And then we've also included in our schedule to do the design permitting and bidding of the new construction to bring on the well field. So I'm gonna show you one more slide, and that's, you don't have to look at all the detail, but just wanted to show that we have built out a schedule that takes you through the construction of the well field.
That's good information.
So that just follows, I walked you through everything through 2018, and then after that would be the construction.
So this, this says that it would be online the end of 19. Is that right?
After construction and...
Is that the beginning or the end of the construction?
We're booking at the beginning of...
He's looking at the bottom line.
I'm looking at the bottom line, number 19.
The beginning of 2019, I'm pretty sure.
Well, it says October, so it's the end of 2019.
October of 19. Is that, that's the beginning of construction? I assume it is. But you've got, you've got the bidding in October of 18, so I'm assuming that was the end of construction.
All right, we have...
Yeah, you're looking at being online, getting that, you know, first gallon of water out of the ground.
In, yes.
October 19.
The end of 2019, correct, correct.
This here will be available. It'll be updated all the time, so you can draw your eye across from the date to find out what kind of money we're spending as well.
Is this in total, Bob? Is this, are these increments? So it says like what?
You're going to the bottom so that can change? That could go up another $300,000.
Right, but that's, that's right now the running total if you add up all those things going down?
That's what our estimate is.
Those are for each task.
There's, there's no running total. They're kind of each little block has a price associated with it.
Sorry, I'd have to add them all up.
So those are the check you gotta write each time.
Nice try, though.
Yeah, I liked it one and a half.
So it's about $2.5 million.
Yeah, it was far enough.
For a well field.
Again, you know, there's a billion and a half construction. We, Bob and I, we haven't talked about it.
No, I know, Jimmy, we're not gonna hold you to that, just...
Might be an umbrella with a fence.
Right. That's what you want.
Hey, Marie, was that 700,000 gallons per minute or per day?
Per day.
I think we gotta go back and fix that one.
About 2.2 million.
That's a hell of a well.
And that's assuming, assuming we don't have to treat it.
It's more like 700 gallons a minute, right, though?
700 gallons per day.
And we've already spent some money.
What is that a minute?
.7 million.
So it's about two and a half.
Five, five gallons per day.
Yeah.
Bob, how much have we spent to date? About 100 and some odd?
Under 200,000.
That's what I thought.
And we're going to town, and we're looking to spend a little bit more previous to town meeting, and then we're gonna ask for 304,000. That'll get us through the summer. I don't want to put the brakes on anything here if we can get the vote and you, the blessing on all this.
And we have a little over a million in reserves?
Well, I was gonna show, I was gonna, we have certified like 1.2 million as of last October. We put aside and covered 550,000 for the purchase of land, and we bought a truck this year out of, out of retained during it. So really, we're looking at a bank $600 and something thousand right now.
As of last year's certification?
Yeah, as of right now.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
Therefore, you know, when I mentioned about water rates, taking a look at it next year, just to ease the pain.
Marie, could you hand the microphone to the...
Also wanted to show you something else, Jim, because I know you like this. Can you pass this around as well? This is our Waters Debt Service. It ties into...
I think she's gonna ask a question from the audience.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hi, this is Kathy on Cleveland Street. It sounds great that we have an aquifer nearby. My concern is that you mentioned the power lines, and that is, there's an area that's considered an evacuation zone, per National Grid and every source, I guess. There's a proposed pipeline, gas pipeline, going in there. I would be concerned about a conflicting usage. It would be, I'd be very concerned that we would be doing gas construction on an aquifer. So that might be something we want to keep our eye on. There's a proposed 30-inch pipeline going in alongside the existing one, so there obviously would be construction in that site. And it seems to be contra-positive, if you will, for a water source. I think the water source is, definitely needs to be protected above gas. And I will go back to our past pre-permitting process with Lakeland Farm. We talked about the water supply pretty much at length, and at that time, I was on record as saying we need to be preserving our water supply versus a current methodology of first come, first served for water. I would propose that any development proposed need to be a moratorium on it until we're assured of our water supply. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there, is there any, anything more to the presentation? I think we're gonna get to, I think, a discussion as far as actions needed this evening by the board, so...
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Anne Marie.
And Ryan. Hello.
Well, this conversation could go on for quite a bit longer. Is there, do you want to wrap this up or ask a few questions, or?
Uh, well, you know, I guess ultimately, we have to get to the point where you can, you know, continue your work, and I thought you had this.
No, I got it. Thank you.
We're on page 24. So you're gonna be making recommendations as far as town meeting in terms of budget, correct?
Financing.
Yep.
Yep.
And so we certainly need to, to review that here this evening. And as far as any further discussion associated with support for your initiatives, you know, we should have that discussion so that you're not delayed in terms of your, your activities.
Right. So the big, you know, the big sum to, I think, our meeting tonight was, you know, we got the water rates out of the way. I told you that next year, we'll probably look to increase them. Not a big impact on an increase, but, and let it be heard that the water assessments should be used as a good tool for our planning and our zoning planning. And good points made by a resident over there with regards to that. And we wanted to just show you what we're doing about our shortfall in water, or our potential shortfall in water. But not only this site here, we're looking at other sites. And when other developments come on, sometimes they have things to offer. Just case in point would be like Lawrence Street. Lawrence Street has been preliminary pump tested, had some good clean water, some good volume. Towards the last minutes of the five-day pump test, it dipped a little bit. I wish we had a six-day pump test, we'd know what that was, but it's just a nut, it was a glitch. And so that's in our back pocket, not in our back park, but that's, that's a potential site for us. We also have another site that we invested in some years ago, back in the 80s, and that's the Mill River site. So this is just the beginning of something that we just cannot stop because 50 years will be here, and we'll be glad what we did today. And so, you know, the search for water's gonna go on, you know, after this.
So...
I think Jeff was wanting to know, are you, do we need to approve some money, or are you gonna talk?
Yeah, I think, well, two, two things I just wanted to add. One is, one is that. But the first is, just the conversations we had with the DEP in the fall were, when we were talking about the Holbrook Street well, was to try and seek permission to have that well permitted, but not go for an increase in our, our Water Management Act, because that's really a much more challenging process. What we're trying to do with them is create a redundant well. And then, and, you know, you heard Ryan speak, and that's, that's really kind of our critical issue today. You know, obviously, our growth curve is a challenge as well, but today's issue is a reality. If one well goes down, either of our wells goes down, we're, we're, we're in trouble. So just wanted to let you know that that permitting process that we're gonna go through for this, this well is not to increase that...
How much toll we can...
How much toll we can withdraw. The second thing that I just wanted to say was, is to answer your question, I think, Bob, I, three, I think we're looking at a, through our Capitol Warren article, to have a request for, I think it's 304,000 or 305,000 dollars to continue this operation through the, through the summer. You know, and that'll be in addition to the money that we have still set, which is dwindling. But we have the money. But that's to get us through the five-day pump test and to get us through the rest of the process that would get us into the, into the fall, when obviously we'd have another opportunity at, at the fall town meeting if we needed to ask for more money at that point.
And just a little quick, I noticed that there was a five-day pump test in 2018, but is it 2000, what's, what's happening this year with the pump test?
So that's the act of town meeting.
So that would have to be July.
We're gonna be going out there in April, and we're gonna start popping some holes. Is that... Our goal is to get all the wells in so we're ready to, at the town meeting, we just put up the pumps and start pumping wells for five days and get our...
Yep.
Because again, with the water table being such an influence on our groundwater, whenever we run a pump test out, it's gonna determine, and whatever our water levels are, how much we can pump. It's gonna say, how much available water we have. The water gauge is at 50, 50, 10 feet less water, 20 feet, a lot of water.
But an important factor and the benefit of this other well field is, and I probably don't have to tell anybody this, but I told you about the demand on our wells and sometimes how they go 24/7, and these wells will now be able to rest. Well, this other one can go online. It isn't, we're not asking for more combined water, but it's just a, it's a wonderful extra.
The sooner it's online...
Yeah, so we can rest, you know, there's...
Ahead of some of the significant development potentially, yeah.
So, one thing that we can talk about, and we don't have to do it tonight, is, but as we, as we come back probably in two weeks to talk more about the budget in the capital articles, is to talk about whether or not we wanna approve the 300,000, or our request, the $300,000 to get us through next town meeting, or do we wanna look at the whole project now and just go to town meeting at this point and ask for every, you know, if we add up all Scott's numbers, do we wanna ask for authority for that whole amount now?
Well, if you ask for the 300,000, you're taking it out of the reserves that we have in place. If you ask for the whole project, you're asking to borrow.
Yep.
And you may have a, a site that doesn't pan out, so do we need, want all the money now?
But you.
Well, you don't have to borrow.
You don't have to borrow, and you're just getting the authority to do it, and, and if we never use it, then it just comes off the books.
Well, that's, then that's a great idea, I think.
Well, it depends on the environment, politically, you know, whether people will be up for that or not.
You'd hate, you'd hate to, you'd hate to go spend 300,000 dollars and then get denied for some, for a, for a political reason in six months, you know?
That's a good point.
Or a bad political reason, six months from now.
That's a good point. If we didn't use it, Bob, we'd just retire the debt, we just.
Yep.
So I, I guess just in terms of the activities taking place and the, the plan that was discussed, I mean, look to my colleagues here, full support?
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, I mean, you've kept us close to this for several years, so yeah. I think what, this report was done in October 2016, so this has been in the works for several years. Yeah, thank you.
And any comments that were made, you know, certainly take it under consideration and we'll react accordingly. So in terms of any formal action by the board, Jack?
No, I think when we come forward with all the capital articles, you know, we'll, we'll, I'll, I'll give you the option, you know, the option, what I just talked about, so we can talk about which strategy we wanna go.
Good?
That's it.
Thanks, Bob. Just before you go, just one quick comment, and I know I speak for both, we haven't had a lot of storms this year, but we did have one pretty good one, and I just wanna compliment you and your guys while you're here. They did a phenomenal job, and anyone that drove from one town to another could see the difference between Norfolk roads and other towns' roads. So, thank you for, as you always have, well done.
Well, the credit goes to the guys, and I'll make sure that we pass that on.
And there's unanimous agreement.
We're now, go.
You did a great job.
Nice job, Al.
Have a good night, thank you.
Thank you, Bob.
Do you need a recess?
That's fine.
I don't, no, no.
Okay. It's approximately 8:30.
Thank you all.
The next item of business is involving the Run and Gun Ranch located at 123 Seekonk Street. We will discuss an application for an entertainment license. So who will be representing Run and Gun Ranch regarding the entertainment license? Mr. Brogan. Welcome.
Welcome, sir.
So, I know my colleagues have also received in the packet here for, for this evening, the application that you filed. Our last meeting, we had some questions that we developed a list basically and presented that to you. Mr. Hathaway presented that to you, I believe, and you've come back with a modified application.
Yes, sir.
So, perhaps give you an opportunity to discuss your intentions as far as this upcoming season, and also maybe take a step back and give us some sense for the evolution here of the property and the activities that you anticipate taking place at that property going forward. Because obviously, there's some pretty significant changes in terms of the license that we've been presented, the application we've been presented versus the activity level prior year. So, I think I speak for my colleagues here in us wanting to understand what your intentions are.
Just to be able to have the events at the, at the farm that sanctioning bodies would like to have. Mostly barrel races, you know, there's two shoots, as there's always been. And the rest of barrel races and poles, which is really the same as a barrel, the poles, they're just bent poles instead. Yeah, we, we are having more events, obviously, more people that realize the good situation we have wanna come and wanna have a venue there, because it's a good, a good facility.
Where were they?
Yeah.
Given the, 300% agree, where, where were these being held in the past? Like, I don't understand where's the demand is coming from, were they not being held ever and it's just suddenly popped up?
Actually, we're gonna hold some, we're gonna have our own.
What do you mean, like, I'm sorry, so?
So we're, we're going to have NBHA, IBRA, and then we're gonna have our own summer series where we have seven events that we will hold. Top six, and you'll be able to take the six best and combine it and have a points, and we're gonna, you know, do payback and, and buckles. It's really about being able to give the competitors a buckle when they win their class for the series, so.
So, you know, in terms of the property, I think, you know, people that travel that area, Seekonk, you know, they've seen a lot of activity, a lot of construction here over the past two years. So, I think, you know, for my own benefit, I'd like to understand, you know, the vision in terms of what's, what's happened. And, you know, there's a large structure that's been constructed, I don't believe it's been put into service, but, you know, I think that perspective is important, because as you well know, you know, we have residents who are in very close proximity to the, the Run and Gun Ranch. And, you know, the residents, they also have certain rights as property owners in terms of peace and tranquility as far as, you know, their quality of life. So, I think we need to understand more from you in terms of where is this going?
Well, you know, we built it indoor because my, my girl and my daughter wanna practice, and, you know, I've had a horse in North Carolina for three months and training, and, you know, we gotta go to North Carolina, it's snow here, we're not gonna ride. So, we built it indoor primarily to utilize ourselves, but if there's a rain, if we have an event that's scheduled for a Saturday, a barrel race, we'll move it indoors. You know, so it's, that's why we built it. I mean, there's not a lot of them, there's not a lot that size. It's a, I mean, honestly, I'm trying to build something there for my retirement, all right? And that's what, you know, it's gonna grow until such, such point as, I, you know, I do air conditioning and heating. I can't be an addict at 50 years old calling out for joy, I'm sorry. So, I'm gonna have a farm that's gonna develop some income.
And I don't think, you know, the board wants to, you know, inhibit your ability to generate income and, you know, potentially livelihood. And that's certainly not our intent. But, you know, I'm sure you understand that, you know, this is a balance here, trying to strike a balance between your rights for your financial security versus residents who would like to have, you know, some peace and quiet on weekends and such to do cookouts, especially in the, you know, when the weather improves, and, and, you know, it, it, it is something that, you know, I personally would like to discuss with you in terms of how we can get to that.
Have you been to an event?
I, I've driven by, I've slowed down, but I actually haven't had the opportunity to actually park and go in.
The shoots are, you know, those are popular, but, I mean, our last barrel race, we had nine people. I can have more than nine people at my house on a Saturday for a cookout. I mean, we had nine competitors at the last barrel race. These are small venues. Yeah, they're growing, but they're still small. I mean, they're, you know, I understand the shoots, the two shoots are loud, but they're no louder than the gun club in the backyard, and no louder than it's certainly gonna be when they clear all that acreage for that 40B. So, it's gonna be way louder, okay? So, I, I don't think, you know, and by moving it inside for some of the things, then I think it's gonna be quieter. I'm having to build, build an insulated for sound only, it's not heated, we're strictly insulating it for sound. So.
Sorry. Would you only have it indoors if it rains, Mike, or would you be willing to have more indoors?
Um, you know, it depends on the venue, like.
Or the event, you mean a venue?
Yeah, like, like, the, the, I'm sorry, the event, the event, you know, the shoot, it's, it's, it's too small to shoot in. So, I mean, you can practice in there, but you're not gonna have a, you know, we have a 165 by 265 outdoor arena. The indoor is 84 by 172. It's not nearly the size, it's a third of the size.
I was thinking of the barrel races.
But we can do the barrel races, we can do, people come because our, our arena is not small. And they're tired of running barrels in small arenas. And it lets them, lets, you know, people have horses with longer legs, they wanna stretch out, they wanna have a bigger barrel race. So that's, you know, why they come to our place. But again, we, we can move, if it rains, we can move to inside, because as long as those barrels are set in the same position for every competitor, that's all that matters. Whether they're 100 feet apart or whether they're 60 feet apart, it doesn't matter, it's the same thing, everybody gets timed the same way.
So I was just thinking, again, just for noise control, I mean, you know.
Yeah, um, there's really noises at the shoots, at the, at the barrel races. And I don't, I don't know if any of you have been there, I mean, Jack has.
Scott, Scott has.
I've been as well.
So you can, they announce, they say like, who's up next, and, you know, they go through it. So it's not a noisy event by any means, you know?
Well, you know, I know as part of the application, at least my understanding is, you, you wanna do something different as far as the speakers and such, and I wanna, I wanna understand that.
Okay, so the speaker, yeah, I wanna go back to two speakers, because it's, you know, the arena is 265 feet long and the announcer stands in the middle. So if you take the one speaker and you point it towards the back, well, guess what? You have to have it elevated for them to hear in the front. Whereas if we had two speakers like we used to have on the announcer's stand to go both ways, you wouldn't have to elevate the one going the wrong direction to, for the people to be able to hear if they're up next. You know, that's, the trail is parked into the arena. So if you decide this, today, we wanna point it towards Seekonk Street, well, everybody in the back can't hear it unless you elevate it extremely towards Seekonk. Or if we put it to the back, the same problem. So, you know, one or two speakers, I think the noise would be less with two, to be 100% honest, because you're pointing them at the right direction and not trying to make it through a U-turn. I mean, that's, that's why I wanted to go to two, that's the only reason. I think it's, yeah, reasonable to ask for that.
I, just as a point of record, the, the board is in receipt of an email from Butters. You know, they've expressed concern about the noise testing, the decibel testing that was done at the town's expense. You know, we committed resources to have a qualified person measuring noise levels during a shoot last year.
Yep.
And I have to tell you that I was personally disappointed that there was jackhammering activity taking place on the site, which I know the claim has been made that it's put the results in question. And the individual that was conducting the testing on the town's behalf, you know, they've made their conclusions nonetheless. They felt confident in making their conclusions, but I have to tell you that I'm disappointed that, you know, of all times that that activity was taking place, where up until that time, my understanding is there had been little of that activity until that day, perhaps the afternoon before it began. And, you know, we talk about the test of reasonableness on all parties in terms of, you know, you as a property owner and business person, and reasonableness, you know, by a Butters, and reasonableness on behalf of the town. And I'm not sure that was very reasonable on your behalf, quite frankly. You knew that activity was taking place, the, the decibel testing. So I mean, please, you know, explain it to me, so I understand.
I'll explain it, and you're not gonna like it, but I was told if I went to 61B in this town, there would be no sound test. I went to 61B and you still required a sound test. That jackhammer, and I read the letter, said that it didn't run for three weeks, it ran every single day for four weeks at least, 'cause I broke the rock, all right? Every day, I broke rock out in that backyard, every single day. And I had a mountain of rock there that had to be broken up in order to get it off-site. There was no other way to do it. I'm not gonna spend $1,500 a day to have an excavator come in and have somebody run it. So I had it delivered, when the guy down the street on Stop River was done with it, he brought it up, and we used it from that day forward for weeks, okay? I'm sorry.
That's okay. I, I just wanna take a little issue with what you said. You, you were advised not to do that. You were asked specifically by the town administrator, I believe, not to run that. You obviously defied that. You consciously made a decision for that period of time that you were gonna run it.
I did.
Do you consider that fair play? Do you consider that, I mean, we're, let me finish. We're, we're trying to mitigate, I've said this before, we're in the middle of a rock fight, okay? I, I understand that, you know, there, well, we know very well, 'cause we're involved in it as well. There are issues on both sides of this. We're trying to protect your rights, which you have, but you also have to work with us and work with other folks as well. And that was a blatant disregard of request, blatant. You did that on purpose, you did it knowingly, and you did it, in my view, vindictively. And if, this is not the way to play. I mean, what you do, I'm talking.
So don't tell me that we're not gonna have a sound test.
Well, I'm talking about dealing with the town. What you do interpersonally with people associated with what's going on is between you and those folks. You're dealing with us, the town, and what you did in that regard was a blatant disregard of the town, in my opinion. You knowingly did that, and you were asked not to do it specifically.
Okay, and did the town tell me that if I went to 61B?
No, we never told you that.
Who did?
We never told you that. That's absolutely not true.
Okay.
I mean, the town took steps to avoid even the need to access your property. And we still, you know, in, in terms of accessing your property, the, the town took steps so, so we, we wouldn't have to even access your property to get, you know, some valid objective information. You asked me if I went to the shoots, and it's one thing if someone goes to the shoots, and it becomes very qualitative. We tried to do this in a very quantitative, scientific way, and we had to deal with the jackhammering. It's not, it's not a good situation, because we're trying to work with you. Obviously, we've approved last year, we approved your events. So in good faith, I would have hoped that you would have worked with the town as the town took steps and committed resources. It certainly cost thousands of dollars to have a certified person at the property for that period of time. And I'm just, I'm just very disappointed that the results were less than they could have been in terms of the volume of data that was obtained.
And I spoke with the sound engineer himself, and his exact comment to me was, you're probably hurting yourself with that hammer, because that is not affecting it.
Well, but, Mr. Brogan, there are two parts to this. We're not gonna quarrel over the results of the tests. I mean, we're not gonna get into one expert versus another expert. We've hired an individual, they have, they, they knew full well what was going on, because obviously, anybody there could hear it. We've got a report back that's a valid report, certified, we're not challenging the report. What, what we're, I think collectively concerned about is the, you knowingly, knowingly, take the report off the table. You knowingly did something to aggravate the situation in working with the town that was, you were asked not to do. You consciously did that.
It was a choice I made.
Absolutely, it was a choice you made.
It was a choice I made, sir.
Yep, and so you have to live with that choice.
And I do, and I do.
It makes us, it makes it more difficult to, to. It, it makes us, it makes it more difficult to, to, you're making it harder on yourself by, by doing things of that nature. I mean, we, we, we're, we're not going to win in whatever happens here on either side. But you make it more difficult when you deal with us in that regard. That's my, that's my issue. There was no reason for you to do that.
If, if I can just, I, I think some of the, I think some of the gray area, confusion area of, of this whole topic and, and to Mike's comment earlier that, you know, that there were statements made and I don't remember if they were made or not, but I know there was discussion about the fact that if he goes to sixty-one B, uh, the shooting of guns is allowed under sixty-one B. So one would think, you know, that, that shooting is allowed and the, and that's the end of that issue. Um, unfortunately, as with many Massachusetts laws, and I'm sure other states are guilty of this too, there are conflicting, um, state laws. There are conflicting state and local laws. And this is one situation where under, under sixty-one B, it, it certainly seems that you can, you can, that shooting is allowed. But under our local zoning, you know, there's a, there's a zoning.
A noise bylaw.
A noise bylaw that could potentially conflict with that. So, um, I think.
And then, yeah, then being agricultural, it, it dust and noise and odor are, are not really, you know, relevant being an agricultural use.
And then we get again into the gray area of the agro, agro entertainment or whatever term of the day is.
It's agricultural. It's agricultural. I mean, we, we have, you know, we have another new stud on the property and we are producing horses. So we, you know, whether it's sixty-one A or sixty-one B, it is agricultural. Just so you know, I know that the discussion was brought up that's recreational. The property is agricultural with a sixty-one B tax donation which goes to recreation. It is an agricultural property, is not deemed as for kicks or one of the, or, or the ball fields up on Park Street. It's not a recreational area. It's agricultural business.
I, I don't think we're arguing that. And that, that.
Well, there's been some discussion of it at the last reading.
But that issue isn't before us anyway. We have no say in.
I get that. I get that.
I mean, it's.
It's out now.
You're right. You know, the, the assessor has so designated it and so that discussion's off the table. We don't disagree with that.
Of course.
We're just, we're trying to work through something that is, is a highly emotional issue on all parts. And it, it's disturbing, to be honest with you, when, when we're, we're trying to mitigate this and, and do what we think is fair to all parties, recognizing that neither party is going to be happy with that solution. But to have you not work with us in that regard, there was no reason for you not to work with us. And that's not a fair way to approach this, Mike.
Okay.
But I think we've said it enough.
I think that's, yeah.
I think we're.
That's a statement.
So, you know, in terms of your, your application, just questions and observations. Um, so under safety precautions, I see there's, uh, says no, I think, I think the intention is on, on street parking. There's a question mark after.
Well, that's what I was asking. What is your safety precaution? And my answer is that, you know, we won't park on the street. I'm trying to see is that what you're asking?
Oh, I see. Okay.
Is that what you're asking? Is my.
So we can just take the question mark away?
Yeah, yeah. There's no question that we can park the vehicles on site. There's no question.
So is there any, maybe another way to say it?
Yes, sir.
Is there anything in the license that we issued to you last year in terms of the requirements around the events that you would have an issue with other than, you're taking an issue with the two speakers?
Well, I just think that's a common sense thing, that if you direct them in two directions rather than one. But, yeah, that was the, no, I, I had no other issues. I mean, the events all went off easily. Very, you know, I mean, you can talk to Mr. Stone. There's no issue. There's no, I mean, I don't even think there was complaints at the police department regarding it, the events. So, but.
I think there were some phone calls and.
On the day of the shoot?
I believe so. I believe there were phone calls.
I didn't, I didn't hear of any, so. Nobody came down to, to ask.
Um, so last year, I believe it was fourteen events.
Yeah.
So I know you had some ability to potentially add an event or something like that if circumstances changed. But I believe, you know, if we look retrospectively, it was fourteen events.
Yeah, I think it was fourteen.
It was.
I think, I think one got rained out. Actually, we didn't have one. So I think we only had thirteen.
Now, was one of those events the, I think this says, um, state shoot? Is that what this says? Was that, was that an event last year as well?
Yeah, yeah.
Is there anything that's different? I mean, other than the fact that there's.
No, it's the same two shoots, same two shoots, same food vendor comes to the shoot.
They're both state, are they called?
No, one's just a, one's just a club event and one is a state event where contestants win, um, buckles, pretty much, you know, state champion.
So which was, is August the state shoot?
August twelfth.
So that theoretically would be a more popular event, would you say?
You know what?
I don't know.
You know, it, it's all in the weather because the smaller one was a better day. There was more people there. Um, so, yeah, it doesn't really.
Because I didn't see no.
It's all about the weather. You know, if it's a nice day out and people want to take a ride and go see. If it's not, then they're not coming out.
So, you know, the, the increase is significant, obviously. I think there's forty-two.
Yeah, I have a lot of legal expense this year.
Yep.
I have a lot of legal expense. So.
I guess, you know, just in looking at the significant increase, um, you know, I personally, I struggle with, um, the fact that this year we're looking at several instances where there's back-to-back weekends where there's activity there, um, in terms of the, the burden on the Butters, in terms of their, their rights to.
Yeah.
Peace and, as I say, tranquility.
Yes, sir.
Weekends and such. So, so that's a personal struggle that I have. And I guess I'd like to have that conversation with you in terms of whether this, this can be.
I mean, we're not trying to have six shoots. We're not trying to, you know, I mean, the, the barrel race is a very small venue. Um, you know, it's not as much activity as, as a soccer game up at the field. I mean, and they're short. They're not that long of an event. So, um, you know, people come in and unload and run their horse and take off. So, um.
We'll have to stay around to see if they win or not. Okay, because you, you asked that. I was interested.
You know, you know, yeah. Well, they come, they can come in the morning between eight and like eleven and do warm-ups. They can, you know, if you have a new horse, you want to get them used to the arena. There might be, you know, the announcer stand is really scary to some horses because they don't usually see something up. So, you know, you want to get your horses, um, familiar with the arena. So a lot of people will come. So that's why I asked for, for morning. Um, but a typical barrel race is like noon or one o'clock is the official start, you know, of it. So they have warm-ups, um, uh, and then they have timed warm-ups and then they start the venue. And it depends on how many.
Yeah.
Competitors. Obviously, if there's nine, you know what? I've seen the thing done in an hour and a half. If there's sixty, then it's four or five hours.
So, you know, to the extent that the Butters, that they still feel that this compromises their quality of life, these activities, to that extent, um, you know, you've put a lot of dates here, you know, just comparing year on year, a lot of dates. Um, are you open to some discussion, negotiation with the board?
Are there dates?
It.
No.
Exactly.
No, those dates are, those, I mean, a lot of them are, you know, they're, they're, they're already taken and, and done. Um.
What do you mean, taken and done? I, I.
The organizations have already pulled the dates.
What do you mean? Because you told me you could have them?
Huh?
What do you mean, they've?
Yeah, the shoots are already.
No, not the shoots.
On, on.
Let's, let's have the shoots.
And they, yeah, the, um, MBR, the MBR is already got it on their website.
All, all thirty-eight dates?
No. They have, uh, two co-sanctioned.
So two.
So they have two co-sanctioned.
Which dates, you know, which ones?
No, I don't write off the top.
Because I mean, I think that'd be presumptuous, right? Because you come to, with this for an entertainment license, yet they shouldn't, you shouldn't, they shouldn't make the assumption that you'd get approved for all these dates. I mean, that's wrong. Right? Because why don't we say no?
Well, I guess we'll have to see.
But you know what I mean? So that's, that you shouldn't, that shouldn't.
We're trying to work with you. We're trying to be reasonable.
I know, I, I just, I, I, I know, I get that.
And I guess, you know, for you to come and just.
It's like a horse in front of a cart. I don't want to be presumptuous. Like, I wouldn't go and say.
I mean, so, so my thought is this. You, you always want to know every single date and time. What other business in this town do you regulate the hours of business and the, and the days that they operate?
All of, like, when they apply for entertainment license.
No, no, no.
A business, period. Any licenses issued has days of.
Okay, so, so Eagle Brook Saloon has one.
Yes.
Okay. Eagle Brook Saloon has one. They don't come here for a thing, but they have one and they have it for every, for the year. It's for the year. It's not a specific date and time. It's for the year. And, and, and.
Specific times.
There are.
There is seven thirty to one AM. I'm sorry.
There are specific times.
But there's not dates. There's no day. They, they can have an Entertainment Thursday. They can have it Saturday. They can have it Monday.
Right. Days of the week.
They don't have to tell, and include them Sunday. So, and, you know, um, I know they're applying for one over here. And, and, you know, they want it for Thursday, Friday, Saturday evenings for, you know, for, for live entertainment.
Not in the middle of a residential neighborhood though either.
I'm a commercial agricultural business.
We're trying to be reasonable, Mr. Brogan. We're trying to be reasonable.
I, I just, but, but I am a business in this town.
Mr. Brogan, all of the places you have mentioned are commercially zoned.
Okay, that's.
Commercially zoned.
They're a business in this town.
They're commercially zoned. They're in commercially zoned areas. You're in a residential area.
Yep.
And they're indoors.
I believe there are significantly different considerations when it comes to that.
Okay.
So in terms of your willingness to work with the board to negotiate, I'm not asking you to negotiate down to fourteen, but I personally struggle with back-to-back weekends where people can't even make their family plans around events, basically in their backyard.
I don't know. Is there actually back-to-back weekends?
There's at least a handful.
You've got every weekend, just about every weekend in August, uh, almost every weekend in July. I mean, these are the prime months. And, and in August, you've got the sixth, the twelfth, the thirteenth, nineteenth, twentieth, twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
That's just about every weekend.
Uh, March is every other. April's two weekends.
No, it's the summer months because, I mean, people are going to be more outdoors. We get that.
Yeah, and that's when, you know.
March and April, you've got two weekends each. May, you've got three. June, you've got two. But July, August, uh, you have, which are the prime summer months, you're booked every weekend in August.
July is two weekends with a day.
July is three.
With a day.
July is three weekends.
Yeah.
June is four weekends in a row. June tenth, seventeenth, twenty-fourth, and then the first week, and then the twenty, uh, sorry, the second of July.
June is the tenth and eleventh and the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth.
Well, the shoot is the twelfth. So you get the tenth, seventeenth.
You're right.
Twenty-fourth. That's three weekends in a row, not to mention the eleventh. And then you've got July first and second. So that's four consecutive weekends.
And in August, every weekend.
Yeah, that's when the kids are out of school. It's when they're, no, you know, they're not in college.
But it's also the time when, when people enjoy the outdoors and have the most opportunity.
But, but there's no noise from these barrel races, sir. I mean, there's really not. So, um, you know, and, and if the town would like to do a sound test for a barrel race, I'd be more than.
We're not, we're not doing any more sound tests.
You know? So there is no noise generated from these more than a pool party. So, um, you know, I agree that the shoots are noise. And I'm sorry, but that's what we do. Um, but, you know, to have a dozen people in the yard and have a barrel race.
It's not a four-legged race. I mean, by, you know, kids in, you know, nap, you know, in the, in potato sacks here. I mean, it's, you're talking about.
It's horses.
Horses, yeah.
But they don't make noise. It's not dirt bikes.
But the proximity to the houses is, is very close. It's very close.
I own twelve acres, sir. It's in the middle.
It's very close.
We have one right on Food Street there. It looks right into it, right? So that's pretty, that's right, really close, right? You have one, it's a house that's really close to you, right? Close to your parents' house, that one there. There's residents there.
Yeah, they're, they're, they're five hundred feet from there. And, and there's a big building between us and them now. So.
I say, I need some sound.
You know, I, I think they put a big sound barrier up there.
So, you know, in terms of the dates, can we work with you to prioritize dates? Um, I'm not asking you to identify fourteen dates, but can you take into consideration the concerns that we have in support of your neighbors? These are your neighbors. Um, to at least give them the opportunity so that they can have some peace and quiet every other weekend. They can schedule things with their family.
It's the same neighbors that have driven my legal costs up and that's the reason why I have to have these events.
We're trying to change that. We're trying to change that by putting a reasonableness standard.
That's not going to happen.
All right. Can I ask a question? So, because I know it's going, you said it's going to grow over time. It's going to be your business level, but it's kind of counter, counter, whatever. You said, you, like, some barrel races only have nine people. How profitable, how much, what is your revenue for nine people? What, what do you charge?
Ninety bucks.
Ninety bucks. So then, so it's, you know what I mean? So you, you're not recovering anywhere. So you, you say in one sense that I need to have these.
It takes time to build a clientele.
Okay.
To get, you know, and while I'm working out in the field, I can build the clientele. I put a hundred percent of the farm back into the farm, you know? So I build it up until such time as I, you know, retire. I'm, you know, and by then, people know where to go if they want to go barrel race.
Unfortunately, in residential neighborhood. But on a zone, you know, farm area, I know what you're saying. Yeah, that's, yeah, again, I know what you mean. That's the crux, yeah.
It's what we do. We, we, these horses are.
Oh, no, I know what you do. It'd be nice, you know, again, my dream scenario is you're in a nice, you know, spot. It's fifty acres of fertile land and no one else is around you.
Somebody buy mine. I'll go buy another piece.
Yeah, I was going to say.
You know, I'll put mine to forty B next, you know? I mean, really? Is that what you want? I mean, you know, you know, that's what happens to the farm land is it gets driven out because, you know, I'm sorry, but, and that's why we have all these, whatever.
This isn't a public hearing, but obviously, you know, you, you've got neighbors that continue to be concerned about what's taking place and what is going to be taking place again this year. So I guess, you know, I want to give people an opportunity. If you have some comments, please direct them to, to myself as chair. I mean, it's appropriate of format for the meeting. Uh, but we will need to limit the amount of time. I apologize.
Could you say, we've got, and we've got, uh, they've been given to us again tonight, but we've got the letters of January twenty-fourth from Tara Kamundle, uh, which has attached to it the letter of October seventeenth. And then we also have a letter of, of March sixth, two thousand and seventeen, uh, from Karen Clark that we will enter into the record.
So please, uh, use a microphone and identify yourself. Please.
Thank you very much for trying to mitigate what's going on here. I'm trying to have to read some things because I'm, this one.
Just, uh, don't forget to tell us your name. I know when.
I'm sorry.
You're Dr. Carpenter.
I'm sorry. Dr. Trish Carpenter, one twenty Seekonk Street. And I want to thank Mr. Plumbel for trying to mitigate some things here. I, I just, I'm going to have to read some things because I'm very emotional about the narcissistic type of attitude that we have here. Uh, it's all me, not, not anything for neighbors at all. Understand that what he's asking here is fifty-one percent of the weekends from March to October. Better than fifty percent of the weekends. Many of those are two-day. That means Saturday and Sunday. I have some great concerns about that. Not just that it's Saturday and Sunday, but there are many people that are going to come, I'm sure, and camp. And that happened, that happened before. That, that's a whole different realm of problems. Public health problems, safety problems, and, and those types of things. I took a. I took a look and had looked at Mr. Brogan's application, uh, in that he part, marks down what it's going to, what the description is, and he says horse shows. There's no horse show here. This is, this is a business. It's a commercial venture. It's rodeo-type events. Maybe it's not total rodeo, but it's rodeo events. There's a whole thing in there about, what about, there's a thing in there about cow splitting, cow penning. Are we going to have cows on the thing now, too? Not just, not just barrel racing. If you look carefully at his application, you'll find that there's, there's stuff about cows in there. If you remember last year when I was here, I said, we're starting, what's going to happen next? We going to have calf roping and bulldogging? We're well on our way. This is not just a little family thing. This is going to try to build into something very major. Safety precautions. I'm, I'm sorry. Just that, just putting down on an application that there's no parking on the street is somewhat of a joke. Last year, we talked very seriously about having emergency routes, to be sure that if there was an emergency, car can go around. Why don't we put that on the application? I don't know. It just seems to me that this application was filled out very quickly and without a lot of, lot of forethought. And Mr. Brogan states, as far as noise goes, be kept as low as possible. Well, I'm sorry, two speakers? I can hear the one speaker up where I am. I don't need to have two speakers. Um, one of the reasons they want speakers is because when these riders do their barrel racing, they have to listen to their tunes. Well, I'm sorry, the tunes are for the rider. Give him an iPad and an earphone, let him, let, let them ride. This, this whole thing is deviated light years away from the, from Mr. Brogan's original premise of stabling breeding and training horses. In the worst, in the worst sense, allowing this solution, allowing these events to go on is what I would, at least what I understand, is spot zoning. Horses participating in the events, they're not bred, they're not stabled, and ninety-five percent of them are probably not even trained by Mr. Brogan or his girlfriend. These are events unassociated with running a stable, with running a, a breeding program. I appreciate your statements as, as selectmen. It's your duty to protect all the residents, the rights of all the residents, not just Mr. Brogan, and I understand, he has, he has rights. But the neighbors have rights, too. And as far as I've seen in the past, I have not seen a lot of help to the neighbors. I've seen a lot of Mr. Brogan, not a lot, not a lot of neighbors. As far as the decibel report goes, I hope you all read that, that was sent to you. We had a, we had our deci, decibel report done. Particularly, I ask that you pay attention to the reporter's rebuttal. There's some very, very pertinent facts in there. Uh, I'm, I'm sorry, but I really, I'm horrified that my tax dollars paid for that report that, that the town had done. There's some really flaws in that. And having the rock crushing going on at the time, just absolutely, I was, I was horrified at it. Lastly, I find what bothers me tremendously, and Mr. Plumbel touched on it earlier, and I'm, and I, and I'm so, I'm so happy that he did, that until now, there has been no time that the Board of Selectmen, in my opinion, has tried to bring the parties together and attempt a compromise. It's all been for Mr. Brogan. From my point of view, it's done all it's could, the Board has done all it's could to create a division between Mr. Brogan and us. I have not seen anything that's tried to bring, bring it together. And I really appreciate Mr. Plumbel's information. Just real quick, just so everybody can see, and make it a lot easier, would you...
I took a calendar.
I took a calendar and I marked the dates.
Show him yours, Jack.
I marked the dates off that Mr. Brogan has asked for shoots.
Yeah, we have, it's very similar.
We, we've already done that, sir.
Okay.
We, we have that calendar right here.
But I don't think they have it on TV.
Yeah, that, that's fine, yeah.
Fair enough, fair enough.
March, April. These are, these are two-day events. The whole weekend is taken up. May, May's a great month. Really only have three events. June, it gets almost every weekend, every, there's something on every weekend except for June third. July, again, all, all except this, this weekend in here. August is amazing. That time when everybody likes to have cookouts and et cetera. September, same thing. And October is rounding up with the whole, the whole weekend. There are forty days, not twenty events. There are forty days of events. That's a lot. And as I said before, it comes to fifty-one percent of the weekend. I, I encourage you, I implore you to help the neighbors out a little bit on this. This is getting worse and worse. It's gotten worse and worse. It's can't, it's going to get worse if you don't put a break on it now. Next year, it's going to be worse. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'll try to be brief. Kathy on Cleveland Street. Um, with the very beginning, if I could take you back, when we first heard about Runnin' Gun, and I literally say heard, um, he had two speakers. In the first day, he had an event. I don't recall, quite frankly, if it was a shoot or a barrel. Those speakers ran all day long and bewildered as to where they were coming from. Quite frankly, I thought they were coming from a school field. And it was one day, so, you know, you shrug your shoulders. But then, when it happened for a second time that summer, that's when I learned of the barrel racing and shooting events. It is noisy. I bought the property at the rear end. If they're, of late, I'm not hearing loudspeakers, so that could be attributed to one speaker pointing the other direction. If two are reinstated, it's going to point in my direction, and it's not going to be just me that's going to be scratching their heads. In the beginning, as Tris mentioned, this whole proposal was presented as a hobby and something for his daughter. And now, repeatedly, he has said, this is a commercial enterprise, I'm trying to generate income. Well, that's not what he was professing two years ago, three years ago. He's taken the inch and he's going for the mile. In terms of the increase of events, they started at six, the next year jumped to fourteen, of which we objected to, and we said, he's going to expand if we allow this. And now, we're at another proposal for a whole lot more, what, was it forty-odd events? And where to just sit back and listen to this with hours elongated as well? Sure, someone's coming at eight o'clock to run and warm up their horses. There's nothing to say that they won't start the event earlier than noon time, because he's also looking for, to increase the number of participants and the number of attendees. Well over a hundred in total. I didn't do the math, sorry. Um, so, you know, yeah, clearly, it's a commercial enterprise in a residential area. And, um, I'm shocked that we would even entertain the number of events this year to the percentage that he's asking. I would profess to say fourteen. Let's try it again next year. And I also would say, let's try to have another acoustical test to validate what we're saying is that the gunfire is exceeding DEP standards. And much like the music that's played all day, let them have the earbuds or some type of, uh, communication system like car drivers have, uh, so it doesn't disturb the neighbors. And I think that's it, what I wanted to be sure to say. And, um, he mentioned about the Lakeland, I believe he was referring to Lakeland, having its trees taken out. Ninety percent of the trees are already taken out, so that noise factor has already happened. And, um, oh, in regards to overnight camping, I fear that the open, overnight camping is going to end up down by us. There's no discussion about restroom facilities, late hour of people camping out, maybe having open fires. We don't know anything about overnight guests. Granted, he can have overnight guests closer to his property, but it seems to me if you're inviting so many participants, up to seventy-five, that's an awful lot of people overnight. And I would like to have more detail around that. I, I'm quite fearful of having strangers in my backyard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Cindy Taman, one twenty-three Ccong. We're the direct abutters to the Brogans' property. One thing that hasn't been discussed lately is the amount of the dust that is attributed to the barrel racing. Um, we are directly next to them, and the amount of dust that is coming in our yard, into our house, is atrocious. Um, the amount of water, I'm very concerned that, you know, if they have any kind of water control on the property, on the dirt, that it's taking away from the water that is coming out of our well, too. There is a twenty-five percent increase in, um, the amount of contestants that he's asking for in this entertainment license. And we, there, we, I don't even believe we're one hundred feet from his property. We don't have air conditioning in the summer, and our windows are open, and it's just amazing how much dust comes into the house.
Thank you.
Paul Kamindle, one thirty-three Ccong Street, a butter. You guys have said a few times about the, um, it's his legal right to do what he wants under the chapter law. Chapter sixty-one B states, "Such recreational use shall not include horse racing, dog racing, or any sport normally undertaken in a stadium, gymnasium, or similar structure." The fact that it says barrel racing is clearly a race. So, right there is the legal mass general law, sixty-one B. Also, the property needs to maintain its natural intent. It has to remain as nature intended it, same as agricultural. When you're sixty-one A, your property is supposed to be farmed. Raising horses is a different type of, it's usually done on private property, and they pay taxes. Michael is trying to get a tax break and make money, which is unfair to every taxpayer in Norfolk. But it clearly states, uh, he can't have horse racing on his property under sixty-one B. Um, that's in the mass general state law of sixty-one, which you guys have referred to a few times, and clearly, it was referred to tonight. And, um, that's where I stand as an abutter. And the jacking on June eleventh, uh, two thousand sixteen started at seven AM and went until three-thirty PM during the decibel testing. And I was a witness to that, because I had to hear it all day with my three young children. Uh, and that's all I have today. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Okay. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, people aren't happy. So, you know, I'm committed to a plan which is reasonable, passes the reasonableness test, because, quite frankly, we don't have anything else. We really don't have anything else to hang our hat on as a, as a town, as a board. So, you know, I'm asking you if we can negotiate some dates. You can get your priority dates. I'm not asking you to have fourteen dates. Okay? That's not what I'm asking, you to winnow it down to fourteen. But is there something that you're open to this discussion with the board? I mean, I...
Sure.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay. I mean, in the spirit of trying to...
No problem, Jeff.
You know...
No problem.
Okay.
All right. Give me a number of events, and I will tell you the dates for those events. So, but I want a couple floaters, okay? And I've said this before, if there's an event in Rainham on Sunday and Tuesday, they know it's going to rain in Rainham, and they call me on Wednesday and said, is your indoor available? I need to be able to make that revenue, okay? I need not. So, I need to have, I think, a little both ways. Okay? So, give me, what'd you say?
Yeah, look, you know, there's a few ways to approach this, but...
What's that, forty-two?
Right now, there's forty-two. I mean, I've identified, just because, what, once again, what I struggle with is where the residents, the abutters, that they can't even schedule their own, you know, cookouts or such around...
They can schedule it on anything but the two, two shoot days.
So, I guess, you know, I'm looking at the dates and, you know, like, a, a May seventh, you know, in terms of a date where, you know, now you, you've got consecutive weekends, is, is one day on May seventh, is it that important? You know, the month of June, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, you know, you can provide the residents some reprieve by, um, striking that from your application. I'm just trying to come up with ways to work with your abutters so that, you know, because we're going to be going through this probably every year.
Yeah.
And, 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 you know, so...
Every year.
So, let's, let's try to work together.
No problem.
So, then, you're June twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, so that's only three dates, okay? Now, in August, August is very full. So, I'm just putting it on the table. I'm saying the sixth, the nineteenth, and the twentieth, okay? Now, there's three dates. That's still, you know, three days of events, uh, the thirteenth, the twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, but you're giving the residents a chance to work their schedules around the weekend of the nineteenth and the twentieth. So, I mean, if we can approach it in that fashion, I honestly think it's not just going to be better for, you know, for the residents, I think it's going to be better for you. I mean, to have a community that can more broadly support them.
We're beyond that, so...
Well, it's never too late. It's never too late. It's never too late.
Can you wait?
Yeah. So, anyway, those are the days, and then I, I have the September thirtieth, October first. Once again, I'm looking at just consecutive weekends. So, in total, what I have in front of me here is, what, three, six, seven, eight? There's eight days out of a potential forty-two days, um, which is still a very significant increase, thirty-four over fourteen. But, you know, at least, we as a board, we're trying to support the, the community and support your neighbors.
I get it.
I mean, and that's just, I can't speak for my, my colleagues. I mean, they, you know, they may have a better idea, which is fine, which is fine.
I know that, I know that Dr. Carpenter specifically doesn't think that we, in fact, he so stated, that we haven't made any efforts to try and mitigate this. I would take great exception to that. But that said, and I apologize for having to say that, but I, I do take great exception to that. We've tried very hard to mitigate this, it just hasn't been what everybody wants. I will not support the number of events you have requested. Just make it very clear. I'm one vote, but not a chance in the world I would support those events. Uh, I'm very concerned about the fact that you are creeping more and more to a true commercial opportunity in a residential area. And I understand you're doing it potentially legally under the sixty-one B umbrella, but I, I agree with the comments that this is going to be a growing event, that's going to get bigger and bigger and bigger, and become more of a problem. Uh, I don't know how we deal with it. I, I honestly don't, but the, the direction is clear, as far as I'm concerned. And, and you've even said it. I, I want to protect your ability to do what you want to do, but I also find your request unreasonable, and I, and I would echo what Mr. Plumbel is saying, that we, we've got to find some mitigation. I would offer a suggestion. You had fourteen events last year. I, I would suggest, or ask you to consider, can you, that we authorize those fourteen events, and that whatever additional number we may choose to authorize, that they be held indoors.
If it's ninety-five degrees... If it's ninety-five degrees out, you're going to put those horses inside a hundred-and-thirty-degree building?
Pick your dates. Pick your dates.
Like, you could do your March dates.
You could do, you could do your-
And I'll be honest with you guys, I only gave the dates till October. There's still November and December, okay? So, you know, we, if we do well, if we do fun with the kids and they do good with this summer series, we're probably going to do it indoor, and it will be indoor for October, I mean, for November and December. And if October's freezing cold-
But you haven't requested that.
No, I'll come back.
The entertainment license is for a specific period of time. You came back last year and asked for an additional date and you were denied.
I'm asking for dates between March and October.
Yeah, I don't know another way to say this, but I get this distinct feeling that you're going to do what you want no matter what.
No, I'm not, Jim. I'm not going to do what I want. You don't know the expense I have this year that I'm trying to fill. You have no idea.
That's true.
No idea.
That's true.
Okay? None. If this is going to offset it, you know, I'm willing to work a little bit with you on this, but, you know, I'm not going to, not going to do twenty-four, not even.
Again, getting back to math, Mike, I know you're going to grow this, so you, like you said, it's clearly stated it's going to be a growing business, so-
I'm not going to lie.
No, we're going to, I think it's, you know, again, I hate to be so blunt, I think it's going to come down to the courts to decide, to be honest with you, because your abutters aren't going to be happy, we've got things to mitigate.
Eventually, we'll end up in terms of period.
Mr. Kamindle, the question about what a horse show is, it has to be defined by the court, because I could argue a barrel race is not a horse race or a dog race, and he would disagree with me, and I don't know what the court's going to say. And I can't say as a selectman, you know, I'm not an attorney, I'm not, but, you know, you said you want to recoup this year, but again, ninety bucks an event, even at forty events, that's three, thirty-six hundred bucks. I know you said more than-
Some events, sixty people.
Yeah.
That's six hundred dollars.
Okay. And, you know, and I know you've incurred the bills, because we've incurred like bills.
Yeah, not.
So, I mean, again, not to your extent, exactly. Again, brought upon us by yourself and so forth.
And as far as the courts go, sir, we've had three injunctions and all have failed.
Right, again, that's, you know-
So, the court's already leaning, all right? We know, we're, you know, the court understands agricultural use.
What happens, Mr. Brogan, if we make a decision that you don't like?
I don't know. I don't know, Jim. You know?
Well, I mean, like I said earlier, there's really, there's no, there's no real guidelines other than what's reasonable. And I typically try to do what's reasonable, that works pretty well for me, and that's what I'm trying to do.
And I'm willing to work with you some on it. How about we, we'll go in the middle? We'll go thirty-four.
I mean, at least-
And I'll pull, I'll pull them off of the two-day weekends, okay?
I mean, I'm looking at certain dates so that there's some reprieve for the abutters, that there's a weekend in between weekends, okay? That type of scenario. That's, that's what I'm looking for, because if I was an abutter, I would want and appreciate that.
So, would you rather I have back-to-back or have Saturday and Saturday? Would you rather I take the weekend, Saturday, Sunday, or, and have the next weekend off and then do, you know what I'm saying? So-
Two days out of four, are you going to do Saturday, Saturday, are you going to do Saturday, Sunday, off, off?
Now, I could answer that question, but it's probably better to get some feedback from the abutters. But, you know, once again, we have limited time here, but let's say for the same number of days, you know, Saturday, Sunday events versus consecutive Saturdays, I mean, or consecutive Sundays, whatever the scenario, is there a preference, you know, as one versus the other? Is there a consensus? Let us know if there is, because that's the kind of thing that we should take into consideration. I mean, because for us to answer Mr. Brogan's question, those you would deserve as if you don't agree with us.
Yeah, clearly too many dates.
Well, that wasn't the-
Back to Saturday, Sundays, you mean?
No, no, no. For the same number of days, whatever that days, the number of days may be-
I don't know how it's possible you couldn't accept thirty-four days.
I'm, 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 the question is, do you, is it preferable to have an entire weekend, Saturday, Sunday, taken up with the activity as opposed to two consecutive Saturdays?
That's what I'm saying.
So that there's at least one day on the week? Mr. Brogan is, he's trying to be reasonable and he's saying-
You don't want a Saturday, Sunday, no. You could do Saturday, Saturday.
Saturday, Saturday is preferable to you rather than have an entire weekend of activity? One weekend and then the other weekend off? You'd rather have-
Preferably, I'd like nothing.
Well, that, it's not possible. It's not possible.
Well, it is possible.
It's, it's not possible.
As far as the zoning goes?
The, I, I don't want to revisit the zoning. I mean, I, I just wanted to get some feedback from the residents rather than this board answer a question if you folks disagree in terms of-
As an abutter, I'd say Saturday, Saturday would be much better than Saturday, Sunday, Saturday, Sunday.
Anyone else have any preference in terms of-
Not two-day events, yes.
You know, weekend off in between as opposed to a Saturday and a Saturday and having one day off on each consecutive weekend? That's all, that's a simple question, that's-
I tend to think that Sunday is supposed to be his Y and K.
I agree.
You just, you just tell us-
Saturday makes sense.
Can you give us your name and address, sir? For the, thank you. You can't hear, you can't hear with the mic. Oh, no. I don't know, why do we not have good mics for this?
It's, we actually don't know. It's for the folks on the cable TV, so we can't, we can't answer your question.
So, I personally believe that Sunday is everybody's quiet day. And so, therefore, I would prefer to see if there are going to be any events, that they be on Saturday, not on Sunday. I think it's the more preferable day for families to have friends over and parties and that sort of thing. And don't need this noise going on in the background. The other thing I'm going to slip in here, I know maybe I shouldn't, the idea of this entertainment license was that you could control, Board of Selectmen could control what goes on over at the Running Gun Ranch. I don't know why Mr. Brogan can't be reminded that you don't have to renew this license. You just don't have to.
It's within reason we have control. We don't have absolute control.
Okay, well, that's something for him to think about.
Let me answer this. I know, I know Mr. Leanne has spent a lot of time on this over the past few years. So, Mr. Brogan and Running Gun Ranch, they have certain rights in terms of what they can do. Really, the entertainment license is a means for the town to influence certain aspects of the activity. That's all it is. We, we're not in a position to tell Mr. Brogan that he can't have any events or to specify details unless they're related to safety type of consideration, public safety, these types of considerations, health, what have you, to the extent that there might be food involved, there's a border health element there. But, but we're limited in terms of the authority that this board has and the authority of the town of Norfolk, basically. So, the, the entertainment license was implemented in good faith as a means to try to influence within the bounds of the law. So, that's, that's really what it is.
Yeah. Just, just one additional comment on that. We have spent a lot of time, a lot of time, with council researching what latitudes we have and we don't have. And I, we are restricted within certain boundaries, and we've gotten clear guidance from council as to where those boundaries are. And as a board, we can't cross over those boundaries. Whatever our personal feelings may be on this, we cannot go against what council tells us our boundaries are. We cannot not renew the license. We have no basis or grounds to do that. We would be, we would be in court and lose tomorrow. I mean, there are certain boundaries we just can't cross, and I know they're hard to understand and accept, but we have spent countless hours, countless days researching this with council. Mr. Brogan's counsel doesn't agree with some of our positions. He's made that very clear. I know some of you have disagreed with positions on our council. You're getting advice legally from, well, lawyers do that. I mean, you can get a lawyer to take a position just about on anything, and I understand that. But we have to go with the council that we retain to benefit, you know, to the protection of the town. That's our only legal resource. We can't, we can't reach outside of those boundaries. And we have to rely on that. And so, we, we know where those boundaries are, and we're trying to work within those boundaries to protect his rights, but also not cross over what are reasonable considerations for you folks. I, I know the right answer. You said it perfectly. You want them all to go away. I, I understand that. We can't legally do that. We have no legal basis to do that, none. And, and I know you may have counsel that disagrees with that, but our council tells us we have no basis to do that. And that's the resource we have to use. It's, we're not going to get into it. I'm just telling you that we have gone through this ad nauseam with legal counsel. You can disagree with it all you want. Your recourse is the courts. And I know some of you have taken that action. And quite frankly, I'd love the courts to decide it and get it off our table, because, you know, because we're stuck in the middle of it. But we're going to follow, whether we like it or not, we're going to follow what legal counsel says. Now, I, I think, Mr. Palumbo, we're trying, as you can hear, we're not happy with some of the things that have gone on. I think you heard that clearly. I, and, you know, a partnership requires all parties to work together, and we, but we beat that up. We're not going over it again.
I get it.
But we're trying to mitigate this as best we can, but the, the boundaries you want are not within our power. They're not. And, and so, we're trying to work through it. I don't know how else to say it. As I say, you have different legal opinions. I understand that, I respect that, but we have to go with ours. We have no choice. No, we're not going to get into it. And our council, by the way, has ruled on the horse racing and does not agree with your position.
I can get back to the dates. I think that long weekends should be forever off the block. We shouldn't have to have our long weekends compromised by excess noise and dust.
Do, you mean two days back-to-back? Is that what you're saying?
Long weekends.
Long holiday weekend. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. That's a good point.
It's kind of a saccharose for folks.
And I think for purposes of tonight, this is just information, so working with Mr. Brogan to the extent that it's, it's possible, you know, I, I think what I'm learning here is that there's a certain convention in this, in this recreation in terms of certain days or when certain things happen, you know, and that's the convention for barrel races, maybe Sunday and not Saturday. So, so what we need to do is to work with Mr. Brogan to see, you know, what's reasonable here and what we can-
I don't know if July fourth and Labor Day, Memorial Day were on the calendar last year or the year before.
Memorial Day's not on this year. Fourth of July is a Tuesday, so.
Yeah, but the long weekend is going to be Monday celebrated.
He's not doing anything on that whole weekend for Memorial Day.
Something on the first and second?
No, it's, now she's talking July. Yes, there is on July first. July first and second, Jack, is on.
Yeah, he does have the first and second of July.
Mother's Day. In June, there's a lot of graduations. People celebrate, you know, with home parties, outdoor events. So, it, there's a lot of neighbor-type things that do happen, so can I answer what, weekends now? No, but maybe a consensus of neighbors can weigh in.
It's more than likely going to be graduation day.
Who would we contact to advise of what we think is reasonable?
I'm sorry? Did you say?
Who should we email in terms of what we think is reasonable for dates?
Well, do, I mean, do as you're doing. I mean, maybe Marianne would be probably, and then she'll disseminate it to the members of the board. You know, I guess a question for you, Mr. Brogan, just looking at the Board of Selectmen meeting schedule here, is this something that, there is a period of time here, perhaps between now and our next meeting, that you can review the calendar and that we could take action at our next meeting? Do you need us to take action sooner? I mean, what?
Tell me how many, how many, and I'll go back and get the dates. I mean, that's probably what I'll do, is pull some Saturdays off, all right? Now, the shoots are on Saturdays, and we did that because last year, everybody said we'd rather have the noise on Saturday than Sunday, because Sunday's, all right? But honestly, the music only plays during the shoots. The music doesn't play during the barrel races, so the music was only for two days last year.
So, our next meeting, correct me if I'm wrong here, is the twenty-first?
Yes.
So, is that sufficient for your needs if we give you some criteria that we would-
Jeff, you can, you know what? Give me, give me till, give me the events until May. And I don't care if we meet in, we can meet in April, right? But you're only talking about four or five weekends between now and May, really. I mean-
Right? I mean, you had twelve, twelve barrel races last year. You're asking, just really quickly, just to give you an eleven already.
It's eleven. You're asking for eleven events right off the bat when you only had twelve last year.
Fourteen, right?
Well, I'm just talking about, we got the two shoots.
You're asking for barrel races. These are just barrel races. You haven't, you haven't got the shoots.
Uh, no, no, there's a shooting there, right?
No, you said shoot is June.
Oh, I'm sorry, June, I'm sorry.
I mean, I'm trying to take into consideration also the season here in terms of, it's not, it's not necessarily prime cookout season type, type of thing either, but, but I guess, you know, look to my colleagues here. I mean, I, I think that's, that's a reasonable recommendation to have some time here to, you know, so that you can work through.
Yeah, I mean, I would have to look at some things and talk to some people, and that's not going to happen in, you know, ten days.
Have you made commitments for the March and April dates already?
Again, I didn't bring my, yeah, yeah.
So, to Mr. Bugby's question earlier, you, you've-
Actually, I mean-
You've made commitments forthcoming here.
Okay. Yep. Thanks. I've been trying to do this since the first year, so-
Right, but your application was incomplete each time and it's even, you know, whatever. But either way, you just were asking, just, I think it was answered.
I filled out the paper fully, but, you know, I'm sorry, but we won't go there.
Just so you know, in the law, we have forty-five days to respond once you apply, so it's, you know.
Fine. Get it.
I think, Jeff, Mr. Brogan wants us to come up with a set number date, so it was obviously twelve last year, just to say barrel races, not to give the two shoots, whatever. You know, we, you know, we comfortable with twenty-four, twenty-six, twenty-eight, thirty-four, then figure out the weekends, I think, is the next step. There's two different-
Yeah, I, well- I mean, I think, I mean, to be fair, I mean, Mr. Brogan needs to know whether or not he can continue with the plans here over the next few months. I mean, I think that's reasonable. I don't think we want to necessarily interfere with that. But to your point, I mean, I think it was a valid point that the preference is that you come to the board and that we agree on the dates before the process starts, and I'm not sure when that is, how, how far in advance. But just going forward, just trying to get on the same page, you know, with you and provide sufficient notice and such to residents, I think that's what we're going to try to do going forward. So, so I guess in terms of, you know, the number of dates, you know, you heard some things in terms of, you know, Sundays, but I think what I'm hearing from you, that is the barrel race day, but you've got barrel races on Saturdays. So, okay, you may not be able to prioritize barrel races for Saturdays, you know, at the expense of Sundays, just because it's not going to be equitable for you in terms of when people participate in these events. And that's a convention in the, in the, in the industry that we wouldn't necessarily be aware of.
Some people run on Friday night and they don't want to run their horse Saturday. So, there's, it's useless to have a Saturday event. No one's going to show up, you know?
So, in terms of, you know, whether it be trying to provide some type of relief for abutters so that it's not an every weekend type of scenario, though, though, that lends, if you could take that- you could take that to the dates, let's say, from June and beyond, and perhaps the board can take that under consideration at our next meeting, we could review the dates and come to some decision as far as the, those five months. And we could take action perhaps on the first three months of your application. And that's just an idea, but, I mean, my colleagues, any ideas that you gentlemen have?
I guess I'm a little confused on what you just said, Mr. Brogan. The suggestion was made that we not hold events Saturday and Sunday. And Saturday was a preference, which makes sense to me. You're telling me you can't do that. Did I hear that?
Some weekends, so some weekends, they have Friday nights. So, that weekend, we would not be able to run Saturday. Nobody's going to run their horse on Friday night and take it back out.
Do you know those weekends?
They have not posted yet.
So, if we start with the premise that we don't want consecutive days?
There's going to be some, because I, you know, last year, we had it, right? There was a shoot on a Saturday and a barrel race on Sunday. I mean, we had that last year.
I honestly don't.
Yeah, we did. Actually, it looks like probably not. Yeah, it happens again in August. Jim, it goes August 12th is.
Yeah, I mean, I don't know how we resolve it tonight, because, and in defending your side of it, I mean, we could sit here and arbitrarily pick dates that make no sense or logic to what you have to work around. So, I don't know how that's fair either.
No, right. Give me a number of events.
That's right. I mean, what he really wants is, we're going to say, you had 12 last year. What do we think is reasonable for this year? I can make a motion, 14 is reasonable. Then he has to come up with, whether he likes it or not, try to figure out 14 of the most profitable dates. I'm just saying as an idea. I'm not saying that's the number, but, you know, I mean, that's what he needs first, I think.
I mean, just looking at the dates that you have and the way that I approach this in terms of some relief for the abutters in between consecutive weekends and such, that works out to eight, eight dates, eight dates, that not knowing the considerations. Well, I don't, I don't, I can't say, because I'm not an expert in terms of knowing the, you know, all the considerations, right? But I'm saying, you know, if eight dates were to come off the schedule between June and October, first prize is I could tell you what those eight dates are. And I would be happy to do that. But I'm not sure, would you like me to try? I'll give you eight dates in the, okay, okay.
The other thing I would ask is, I don't know what you're thinking for November and December, but that needs to be part of this application. I would ask that.
I don't know if it's going to work, Jim.
Mike, how do we resolve this, Mike?
But then you can't come back. Let's make that simple. This is the application. If you don't have on the dates, you're not going to get them.
I mean, you can apply for the dates if you don't hold it. That's up to you. But, I mean, this can't be an open door that, you know, just, okay, now I want to come back because I need to. It can't work that way, Mike. I mean, I won't support that. That's not fair. That's not fair.
When do they, I assume you can't do November and December because those events aren't being scheduled?
He doesn't know if it's going to be demanded. He's trying to build off a program, Jack, like a new program.
He's going to run his own.
So, I'm going to run it over the summer and see how it works out.
It's almost like starting a new tennis camp. He takes off, he's going to want to run it.
It doesn't work out, then it's not going to.
It's like a new venture. So, if it gets so much demand, he's going to be open all the time, indoor, outdoor.
No, it would only be indoor at that time, because the footing is not.
Right. But you know what I'm saying? He doesn't know. You don't know. You can't say, I'm going to run it for four weeks when it gets no signups.
So, what do we do here?
Well, I mean, if we can't decide on the dates tonight, then what I propose is that we move ahead, take some action for the short term to buy us collectively some time so that, you know, we can revisit the specific dates after Mr. Brogan has a chance to educate himself on what the latest is in terms of published calendar, you know, calendar events throughout the state. I'm sure those are the types of things that you're looking at, perhaps even beyond the state of Massachusetts. But I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not sure if there are other good alternatives to that.
You've got 12 events scheduled here for March, April, and May. And if you eliminated, and they're back-to-back, one, two, three, four of them, five of them are back-to-back. If we were to authorize those dates, but only one day, either a Saturday or Sunday, we don't know which one works for you, but only one, then that, that brings that down to six events between March, April, and May.
I'll do eight.
I'm sorry?
I'll do eight. Forget having a four.
With all due respect, can I say something?
This is like the Price is Right.
Cindy Taman, 123 CCONC, I mean, 117 CCONC. I think we're contradicting each other here. And I think that, you know, if the board is saying there should be another, certain number of races for the year, I think we just need to say that's how many we can have for the year. If the Brogans want to have 11 in May and April, then that leaves the remainder for the rest of the year. I think if you, like, like Mr. Bugby was saying, you can't say, okay, let's do your eight now, and then come back, you know, at the next meeting in a month or two weeks and get more dates. We have to give him a number of dates to work with for the year and not just come in and say, for the next two months, let's just come for eight days. Because there's no way that, you know, he's increased, it's increasing 25% in the number of contestants and triple, triple the number of barrel races. So, I think we have to.
I, I think we understand. We understand. But that, that is not the only approach, that we just arbitrarily select a number of events. I, I'm, I'd like to be more principled than that in terms of how we come up with the calendar for Mr. Brogan this year. I'd like to be more principled than that, because I have an expression, it passes the red face test if I was an abutter and I at least had some peace of mind that I knew that I could schedule something on weekends in between, perhaps where there's activity taking place. So, there are alternatives to just arbitrarily picking a number of dates. And that's, I'm committed to that.
Well, it's a two-part, I think, it's two parts, though. Sorry. If we did, my, again, I'm trying to simplify life, because we're going to be here all night. It's a date, it's a bent certain number, and then he comes back with the dates he wants, Jeff. So, the red face test is fine. The neighbors know. Like you said, if he, it's not going to happen. If you say we gave him four, just to make life simple. He said, all right, I'm going to have all four of my events on Mars. Now, the neighbors are the happiest people in the world. They see nothing happening April, May, June, July, you know? That ain't going to happen. But we still got to say, you get X number of events. Give you till 21st, you come back, you give me those dates. That's two parts. It solves your issue, and it solves my issue.
I agree.
How many dates?
I agree.
Right? You're overthinking.
Yeah, I mean, if you, you know, you gentlemen have a number in mind. I mean, I'm not sure what that number is. I mean, it just seems more meaningful to look at the calendar and have some idea how these things.
Well, you do have something in mind, because you cut off eight dates. He asked for what, how many barrel races?
Well, let me, allow, allow me. Allow me the opportunity, and then I'll be the straw man here, okay? So, the month of June, the 24th, 25th, if that was stricken from the application. The month of August, the 6th, the 19th, the 20th. And the month of September, September 30th, and the month of October, October 1st.
And you're at May 7th.
You've got the shoot.
Well, May 7th. I'm not sure whether or not we move ahead.
Jeff, you have the shoot on the 12th in August.
Recognize that, yeah. So, I didn't strike that from.
So, Jack, all right. So, you just named off, again, easy. You just named off seven dates, right? Is that right? Seven dates, seven, I mean, seven?
I didn't count. So, one, two, three, four.
And how many barrel races are on it? 36?
Six, seven. Seven dates. And I would, I would throw in May 7th as an eighth date, just in terms of, you know, providing some relief for.
So, Jeff, you're enough with 30. You just, you just answered your own question. You proposed 30 dates. Mr. Leehan, are you, you know, do you want to make a motion? He gets 30 days. We'll work on the days later, right? Because you just backed yourself into 30 days, didn't you?
Plus the two shoots.
I won't understand when they are as well.
Because that's a change. So, now you might want to give him 20 days then. Okay, see, now you make it.
It gives you some guideline, if you, a rough guideline to work with. Is that helpful to you in terms of coming up with?
I like Scott's idea better. I'm sorry, but.
Sorry, Jeff. I don't know.
And I'm trying.
Well, you can be open. I mean.
How about this? I'm going to shoot, I'm going to kill, shoot myself. 30 dates, two floaters, two shoots. That's 32 dates. That's the Jeff side.
I don't necessarily have a problem with it, but I want to, I'm a very visual person. I want to see what that looks like. I want to see to know that if the abutters would like to schedule things, graduations, what have you, July, August, that, that they have some idea what, you know, their world is going to look like. That's what I'm asking.
Tell me the number of events, and I'll come back next Tuesday.
Well, can, all right, how about, how about a compromise?
I'm sorry, I'm just trying to get.
How about a number of events, and then if you add some rule, you know, add, add your rules in there. So, so say, say whatever the number is. Say it's 30, use the same number, the 30 events plus the two plus the two. But he can't do consecutive weekends, or he can't do consecutive days on weekends. I mean, just add your rule in there.
That's what I feel. That, that's.
But we'd have to look at that, because some already are scheduled, and they're not going to change their publications. I mean, they can't.
So, it may not get us 100% of where we want to be, but it gets maybe 80%.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know.
Well, if you have consecutive days, then I'd say you have to give up more data.
Well, I mean, if you take away consecutive days, just taking away consecutive days, just for the sake of discussion.
When you say consecutive days, you're talking about Saturday, Sunday?
Saturday, Sunday. And, and you keep the same schedule that you currently have. You come up with 24 dates. Just telling you, that's what the numbers say. If, if you were given every weekend, and I understand there are other ways to look at it. I'm just playing with numbers. And you take all of the dates you've asked for, and you just add them up so that they're not consecutive days, you're getting 24 dates.
Plus the two shoots.
That includes the shoots.
But there's a back-to-back, so you can't do that, because there's a barrel race on a Sunday.
I'm not saying it works. I'm just telling you what it says. It's just, you get 24 dates.
Actually, there's a, there's a barrel race on Sunday. 24 isn't, no.
I mean, that's double, that's double, yeah.
Yeah, it's not going to, it's not going to. No, 30 with the two float. Let's discuss the float days. I mean, what's, what's that going to entail? If I have to come, you know?
What do you mean by float dates now? Just be sure I understand.
If Rainham calls and says Tuesday, it's raining Sunday.
You want two arbitrary dates.
I want two dates that I can throw in there.
That aren't, that aren't defined.
And I'll tell you what, that won't be a weekend that's already got an event. How's that? I mean, is that?
So, that would bring it.
You know what I'm saying?
No, I got you.
I'm trying.
So, that would be 26. 24 plus two.
No, no, I'm, I'm saying 30 plus two.
Let's pick, I mean, again, I don't know how you guys want to continue, what you want to do with Jeff.
Well, I mean.
All right, all right. Let's get this done. I'll meet you in the middle, Jim.
Well, 28?
Yep, 28 plus the two.
That's not the middle.
Yeah, it is. You were at 26.
26, including the two.
And I was at 30.
I leave it to you, Mr. Chairman.
Excuse me? Could I make a comment, please? I know, but this.
Since you haven't spoken yet this evening, I said, yeah, I say yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Yeah, please identify.
I'm Thayer Olson. I live at 136 Boardman Street. And I do appreciate and acknowledge the fact that the selectmen are trying to come up with a reasonable solution. It did not seem that way last year, but maybe there were things going on behind the scenes. But I don't think that it's fair to the neighbors who have put up with 14 dates last year to more than double it this year. I could see increasing a few dates, baby, but that's, I mean, that's less than what Mr. Brogan originally wanted. But that really is, I think, imposing on the neighbors to a huge extent. So, that's just what I wanted to say. Thank you.
Okay, so this is a process. I think we got some experience last year. We're getting more experience this year, as painful as this is, right? It's painful. So, 28 dates, inclusive of the shoots, okay? So, I think if my colleagues would support that, I think perhaps we go ahead. That's basically double what you had last year. You had 14. And so, this year, it's 28. And I guess, you know, with the caveat that you certainly like you to take into consideration some of the comments that were made in terms of preferences for Saturdays versus Sundays and those types of things. I mean, so, that's what I'll put on the table, I guess. I'll look to my colleagues for their comments.
I don't want to want you to give number, yeah, again. You know, I know people out there in the crowd there say that that's ridiculous, which in some senses it is. But, you know, I don't, I, you know, this whole entertainment license thing is, it's, in my mind, it's, you know, we're walking the edge of a fine line anyways, whether, how much control, reasonableness we can apply to this anyways. Like Jim said, that I'd rather have it off our plate. Fortune is not, and I'd be decided by smarter people than myself, what's right and what's not right. I struggle, you know? I don't know. Yeah, well, not because we need to move things along. We're still, we don't know the dates. We're going to give you just a number, and you're going to come, and Mr. Brogan's going to come back to us with dates and with the caveat of no consecutive dates. I guess, we have that? Is that what we're saying, too?
Well, a lot of things have been discussed, so I don't know how fine we can get, really. I mean, I certainly wouldn't want you to see July, August, the primary months for people, you know, you load it up, and then they're just, you know, you got to kind of, you know, you got to, got to be reasonable. Make sure it passes the reasonable test. And you know as well as I do what that is.
Can we, if we do that, I mean, can we get, you know, if we decide on a number, you know, then, I don't know, say, can we have another bite at the apple? Do we then get this, you know, provided that we see the dates, or are we going to just go out there again?
Yeah, we still have an opportunity to look at the dates, yeah. I mean, but, Mr. Brogan, he's, he's being reasonable. He's, you know, he's at 42, and he's, he's willing to work with us here with a much smaller number. So, I'd say this is a good first step, and hopefully, we can, we can finalize.
But it's not going to get small. I mean, let's, let's cut the chase, right? You're going to, you know, if it's successful, you ask for 42, we give you 28 next year. If this is wildly successful, you're going to want 62, and we're going to agree to 32, whatever. Yeah.
And that's why I say I would like there to be some periods where there's weekends, where there's some peace and quiet for the abutters. That's why I'm principled in why I say that, because that's important. I think that's important.
Well, yeah, but again, you're going to run, you're going to run out of weekends if again, comes back. Because again, he's trying to grow up. I get it. That's your nest egg. You know, I mean, it's, once it gets to 62, there's going to be, you're going to have no, no leeway, no wiggle room. So, we can, you know.
We, we're not putting out the dates arbitrarily. We're picking the date. Maybe the number is arbitrary, but Mr. Brogan has to come forward with the actual schedule.
And the same thing next year, right? When we go from 28 to 42, it's going to fill up then. Eventually, we're going to be 200.
We have to deal with that next year.
No, I get it.
I, I, I think we need to finalize at this point our business. I'm sorry.
You're pointing towards a number, and he has already increased in three years' time. Each number, each year.
This is a good faith effort on Mr. Brogan's part, okay?
I would say 20 would be a good faith number. We should start at the number of 14.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kathy. Please, please let us conduct our business, okay? Because unless we come up with something that is reasonable, then we've accomplished nothing, because, you know, we then, then, you know, there'll be, you know, a legal challenge of some kind that, quite frankly, is going to be expensive for everybody. And that, that's, that's not good. That's not good.
I just think we're starting at the wrong end. We should start at the number of 14. We should start at the number of 14, which we had last year.
What's that, Jack?
No, I'm good.
Jim, 28 dates, that's double last year, and we get an opportunity to look at the dates, look at the calendar that Mr. Brogan presented.
I'll be honest with you, I, I support a lower number. I mean, the, the logic, I've, I've given every single weekend you've asked for, which I would hope would change, because we don't want the consecutive weekend, and with the two floaters, I come up with 24. And, which is the number I told you, 22 plus two, and, um, at this, at some point, you gotta draw a line. I, I, that's, that's my line. You guys can al-vote me.
You wanna make a motion?
No hard feelings, but I, I'm not going over that number.
Okay.
Make a motion to that, then?
Yeah, I mean, if, if I was willing to support 28, obviously I'll support 24. I mean, so, um, let's take a look at what the.
That's 22 with two floaters.
Yeah.
So 20 plus two, plus, 20 barrels, two shoots, and two floats.
Right, 20 barrels, two shoots, and two floaters. And I know Mr. Brogan's not gonna like that.
He doesn't like it. You wanna make a motion to that?
Uh, so moved.
Okay, second.
Okay, so, motion's been made and seconded, so I would add, under further discussion, that we'll review the dates that Mr. Brogan provides. We can go ahead and we can execute the license, but I believe it's contingent on a date review.
Well, there are some other, but there are some other issues here. For example, I don't support two speakers. We, we had one speaker last year. It clearly mitigated things for the neighbors. I, I don't wanna go backwards on this. I, I just, I understand it's an inconvenience.
Fine, fine.
Yeah, I just, I, and.
It's gonna make it better.
I'm, last year, the license was from 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. You're requesting 8:00 AM. That, that's unreasonable to me. Why, what was the problem with 10:00 AM?
They come, they come at nine. So, so what, so what's the?
People arriving is, they can arrive at 5:00 in the morning, there's no one that can prevent that, but the event can't start before 10:00.
The shoots definitely, the shoots have to start before 10:00. There's too many, the shoots were a different time last year.
Were they?
Yeah.
Well, whatever the times were last year, I'd like, I'd like to keep those times the same.
Because you were happy, that worked, I think, for you.
Okay.
Because I don't know what it works. Because I think we're, it seemed to work, right, the time, whatever.
I mean, it's reasonable.
Yeah, okay. And, and I, this is me, you guys jump in, I, I don't support two speakers, I, we.
She already said fine.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, I don't, yeah, Mike wants to go, yeah, he already said fine in that, same hours as last year.
I did not hear you say that.
Sorry, we did.
According to the license, all the hours were 10:00 to 6:00 PM last year.
I know that one shoot starts at 10:00, and one, the state one starts at 9:00. I know it does, so.
Well, let me check.
I don't wanna be out of compliance, because then I'll have a complaint.
And I would, I would respectfully ask that the dates that come back take into account that we are trying to avoid consecutive situations as much as possible.
Yeah.
And that we're trying to avoid Sundays as much as possible, but I recognize that that may not be fully within your control.
I'll try.
Okay. Scott, any further discussion?
I'm fine.
These are only from April to October.
No. No, don't, I, I, if you, if you have dates you want, I, I, does anybody have an idea on how to deal with that? I'm not comfortable, Mike, with coming back.
We did last year. It was no problem. No, I came back twice.
Right.
I didn't come back the second time, I was told not to.
Well, the first time you came back was after we were gonna evaluate the first shoot, whether or not we were.
Yeah, and I added a date. And then the second time, I was told not to, and I didn't. You can look at the.
Okay, you, you, I remember that. You, you came back, and if I remember, the discussion was, is that you forgot it.
Well, I missed it.
You missed it, you missed it, and, and actually, we checked your website, and, and you were correct. You, you just missed it. The second time you came back, you wanted to add a date, which was a different conversation, and that was denied. So, what you're talking about here is adding dates. I, I mean, the problem I have is where does it stop? I mean, you know.
Okay, so again, if I put it indoors, it's not considered?
I can't answer it, I.
Well, it's still dates, it's still, I mean, again, it's still gonna.
If it's indoors, though, it's not considered. I mean, it'd be like four kicks. It's an indoor activity, the noise is inside.
Well, it's still considered, but it's, but it's.
It's, it's less offensive.
Theoretically, could be a lot less impact on the neighbors, and so that's, that's why we don't have the neighbors of Eaglebrook coming here, because it's indoors, you know, and they're, and they're far away.
May have to include it until we, we confirm that there's not the nuisance issues and such with the, the indoor, which there probably won't be, but who, we don't know, we don't know. But maybe that's how we'll need to approach it, so, but, yeah. So, so we've established the number of dates, and you'll come back, you'll present basically the calendar.
Yeah.
Between now and our next meeting.
21st, 21st. Always Tuesdays, yeah.
All right, so.
When's the one after that, like the 4th?
It's two weeks after that, so whatever, April.
Because you wouldn't be able to have any March events, Mike, I think that's the point, right?
I'll tell you what, what's, what's. What happened to you back there?
Okay, okay, okay.
So you have time to review on.
Thank you.
Okay?
Very good, okay, very good, okay. So, the most, no, he's gonna have them by Thursday, his dates, to Marion, and she'll distribute that information. So, the motion's been made, it's been seconded, there's been further discussion, I take it Marion are capable.
Jack has.
Administrative assistant has captured all that information.
Jack, is there further discussion? Scott, you want to, just for Marion putting the license together and, and are you gonna approve?
22 and 2, eh?
Yeah. I guess you're, you're approving everything after March 21st, kind of conditionally, but you're, but he's got two dates for March 11th and March 12th, which, which I think we need to just kind of approve outright. You're gonna kill those two dates.
Because it's not gonna be properly, right, I can see what the numbers are.
The green is already still wet.
Yeah.
Still get frost, and it, there goes two, all right?
No, I know, I mean, but.
He's not, not doing the March, March 11th and 12th.
We don't know about 25, 26, obviously, but.
It's just not safe.
No, I understand, yeah.
And no one's showing up in here.
I don't think it's gonna dry out in a week, not with the weather.
And so, basically, what we've just discussed, and you've captured, there's the contingency contingent upon our review of the calendar, which Mr. Brogan is gonna be providing, review and approval, so, okay?
So, just so I'm clear in the process, if, if, if he comes back and he meets your requirement of, would you say 22 and 2?
22 and 2.
What feedback, if any, or you can give him the feedback now, is he, is he okay to start scheduling those events? Or are you gonna, you're gonna do?
We're gonna look at the 21st.
You're gonna review the calendar? I just, I wanna make sure that he, because he.
Yeah, you're on the agenda.
No, well, the intent, I believe, is that we're gonna review the dates before.
Well, I'll tell you what, send the dates, send the dates, we can comment individually, but we can't.
Yeah, you guys can't make it to the suit.
Delivering. We will comment individually if there's an issue.
Because if you guys have a problem, we don't wanna discuss it on the 21st. We wanna have it corrected before that.
But, 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 no, because, because you guys can't do that. I mean, you guys can, you guys can give me feedback, but you can't.
That's exactly what I said.
You did, I know.
Exactly what I said.
But coming to a conclusion, you guys, unless you're gonna authorize me to come to a conclusion.
No.
And you guys can't come to a conclusion.
But, we can say individually that this looks acceptable to me. I can tell you.
You will not have a decision until we vote it in our.
And Jim can tell you, and Scott can tell you, and if, and if there's not an apparent problem, then there's no reason to ask, you know, put, put it on the agenda for Mr. Brogan to be here if it makes me. We have to vote it.
We have to vote it.
We're gonna, we're gonna vote tonight a contingent, but he doesn't have to be.
He doesn't have to be a person.
You don't have to appear.
You never have to.
That, that was his point.
Exactly.
Okay.
You love it, Mike. Sure everyone does.
I really do.
We don't wanna violate open meeting, because then we have a whole nother set of problems. We're not gonna do that, so, and you're not asking us to, I appreciate that, so. Okay, so, motions been made, seconded, for a contingent approval of the application, of the entertainment license, contingent on review and approval of the calendar, which Mr. Brogan is gonna provide. If there's no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay.
Thank you. Thank you.
Sorry.
Thank you.
All right.
It's a process.
For those of you that came this evening, thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Your input is always appreciated. Next item, Jack. It's your show, Town Administrator Report.
Other than adjourned?
We're a long way from that.
Not much faster than everybody else.
No, no, it's me, by the way. He said, he said administrative, oh, that is administrative, that's right. Yeah, I, I, I saw, I missed the bull's head.
No, this is when I get to turn it over to Jack.
Yeah, thank you.
I understand.
This was the first meeting that I have heard the board of selectmen say, I understand what the neighbors are going through.
Oh, no, we've always done that, Mr. Croft. He's a problem, we, we call the council.
Oh, that's, that's not true, Mr. Croft. I understand your position, and I, I respect, I'm not angry at anything, I respect your position, I sympathize with your position.
Yeah, and you, you, you know, he'd say, he'd argue the same, you know, again, I see, you know, he's right, no, I agree, and it's like you said.
One of the most painful parts, you know, I live here, too. One of the most painful parts of this job is when, when we're told that we've got very distinct boundaries, and our emotions wanna go over the boundaries, we get very conflicted. And, and, and it's never seen, you know, you don't, a lot of what we do, you don't see on TV, and, and I understand it, and I, please, I wasn't being.
I saw any empathy.
Yeah, it's always been empathy.
There was always empathy.
Well, your, your comment is appreciated. It's appreciated by all of us.
Thank you for coming up, I appreciate it.
I mean, we look for an out, an easy out from the court, you know, from our, our attorney says, if we could deny it, we probably.
Narcissistic attitude, just absolutely, I, I deal with emotions every day.
I know you do.
I'm more than you do.
I.
I have to put people's dogs to sleep.
Oh, yeah, that's the word.
You know what a dog lover I am, so.
They're there, it's not fun.
So, and out of fairness to Mr. Brogan, he is demonstrating his willingness to work with us here this evening. He, he, he really did. He really did.
I'm sorry he spent $100,000. I also am concerned, you know, that building he's built, if he's gonna head into our Riz, he's gotta catch some sprinklers and all that sort of thing, and it's not on his building plan.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, thank, thank you, yeah, we, yeah, we better.
I wanna personally thank you for coming up.
Thank you.
The only thing I can say to you is that, you know, at, at least leave with this one thought, that there was a lot of empathy there. It may not have been displayed appropriately.
I mean, that's why I said.
It may not have come through, I wish it had, because I certainly would try, really try.
And as I said, if it cost me $100,000, if it cost you $100,000, I'm sure you would be upset.
I would, I'd be more than upset, yeah, I would. Thank you for coming, thank you for saying that.
Thank you, folks. Okay, Jack.
Sorry about, I, I, I would have stuck to 20.
See David in the audience here, I mean, do we?
Yeah, do you wanna, do you wanna, David, did you have an agenda you wanted to talk about, or?
He probably wants to go home.
No, he's just enjoying this week.
He just came to, to watch the show, huh?
He's thinking of pulling, I think he's pulling papers.
Okay.
It's all Jack.
All right, Jack.
Is there some particular topic you wanna talk about, or?
I'm literally just here to watch, I've never done one before, and it's been pretty entertaining.
Yeah, it's not always like this, usually it's quicker than.
Better than cable TV, right?
All right, so I will be, I'll get kicking in the high gear now.
I'm not sure I'd call it entertaining, but I appreciate your comment.
Honestly appreciate you guys, that was an amazing way to handle a very complicated situation, and really appreciate it.
We'll try.
Well, thank you for that. I mean, we, we live here, too, and these are volunteer jobs, and we're, we're stuck in the middle. And we're just, we're trying.
All right.
Thank you for that, thanks.
Do I take over, Jack?
I keep trying to hand you the ball, and you're not taking it. I'm trying to, I'm regrouping.
Mr. Hurricane, anytime you wanna proceed here.
Taking my coat off.
Actually, we could, we could knock off pretty quickly.
All right, so please consider authorizing me to sign the attached contract with Stop &amp; Shop.
Can we just start, right, right in order, let's do the warrants, it says the following warrants, then we have to mention.
It's a report of the warrant, it does, all right, so the following warrants have been signed, 22817, number 35V17, for $213,120 and 13 cents.
I can attest to that.
Okay.
Well done, Mr. Brogan.
As I started to say, please consider authorizing me to sign the attached contract with Stop &amp; Shop. This is a negotiation that's been going on with Mr. DeLuca and myself for, and Mr. McGee for a long time. The cruxes of the matter is they wanna release their bond for $635,000, which will still have to go through the planning board process, so we're not saying release, we're not, this agreement does not say we're releasing bond. It's saying we're gonna, we're gonna work with them to go to the planning board to have it released. Bob has worked out a, a list of, a punch list of items.
Crosswalks and other things.
Yeah, and it's, it's all been agreed upon between the DPW and the Stop &amp; Shop engineers, the, I can't remember the name of the firm off the top of my head, but we've gone through that ad nauseam. Mr. DeLuca, again, has been involved in that process. So, we're trying to, we're gonna get them to, to fund that, the amount, to, so that the town can complete that work, or leave it in, leave it in a fund that we would finish those crosswalks at the time that that, you know, we'll work with the planning board, obviously, when, build those sidewalks, when, there's a couple of them that will, would be built after there was some development on those appropriate lots.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to have the opportunity to review that, only because I've had a few very long and uncomfortable meetings with Stop &amp; Shop over that punch list.
Be happy to send it here.
And I've walked Liberty Lane and up the road and helped to prepare a punch list some years ago, so I'd like to have a look at it.
Well, I greatly respect my former planning board member's opinion on that, and may I suggest a motion that might accomplish that, that I think it's a legal motion that we move to approve, subject to the chair's review and subsequent approval.
True. Second.
Further discussion?
Agreeable to that, thank you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing on, all those in favor say aye.
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 Do you wanna recuse yourself from the next item, Mr.?
I will recuse myself from the next item, and for purposes, this is, Questers is requesting a one-day liquor license, and it's from 6:00 to 10:00, Marion, not 7:00, that was my mistake. This is a nonprofit organization that holds meetings regarding old things, I guess is the best way to, my, my wife would be terrified that I said it that way.
Historical items.
Histor, oh, much better, thank you very much. And they're, they, you know that the Coast Guard incident that they made a movie of, The Great Seating off a charity, well, the gentleman that wrote that book is gonna be their guest and speak about that, and he'll be open to the public, and they're holding it at the library, and my wife is a member of Questers, so I will recuse myself from the vote.
Okay, so, I make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Questers in the library common room on Friday, May 5th, with the hours between 6:00 and 10:00 PM.
7:00 and 10:00.
No.
Oh, you just staged it.
It's my mistake, I never let the husband deliver the wife's message, never did that.
Okay, motion's been made, I'll second that motion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And note that Mr. Lehan has rightfully recused himself.
He has overzealously accused himself.
Perhaps, perhaps. I have appropriately recused myself.
Please vote to appoint Melissa, and I apologize if I mispronounced her last name, Enulet. You have any idea? No? A member of the Norfolk Cultural Council for a three-year term expiring on June 30th, 2020.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Please vote to allow the garden club to use the Townhill Bandstand for its annual perennial plant and bake sale on Saturday, May 20th, from 9:00 AM to noon.
So moved.
And there, and you wanna do the rest of it? All right, you, oh, okay, I'm sorry, apologize. I had my, I had my finger over the dash.
Okay, motion's been made, do I have a second?
Oh, absolutely.
Seconded, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Please vote to allow the Norfolk Grange, number 135, to hold their annual clean and green campaign on Saturday, April 8th, from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m., which I would be remiss in pointing out is the 43rd anniversary of Hank Aaron's 715th homerun.
And I will, I will make a note that I was actually at that game.
Oh, come on. I'm sure, I'm sure you were.
I was, I was.
So moved, I'm both, I move both.
I was actually, and I turned to tell my wife that she just saw a monumental occasion, and she looked at me and said, what happened?
I suppose, I suppose now he's going to tell us that he was at Carlton Fisk's homerun game too.
No, I wasn't there.
So moved.
But I was there, I lived in Atlanta.
I thought you were there.
Well, he was at another famous game, it was a hockey game.
No, I wasn't there. I was there for the Bobby, I was there for the Bobby Orr goal.
He's not all the...
I got a picture of him.
Famous, he wasn't at the Super Bowl.
I didn't take it.
I moved.
So moved. I'll second.
Motion's been made and seconded, hearing no further discussion, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Please allow, please vote to allow King Philip to put up signage within the town, and Jim actually might want to speak to this, because he spoke to Steve Share.
Yeah, Steve, Steve Share, the athletic director called, and he would like to have the town to consider putting up signs recognizing the accomplishments of the athletic programs at King Philip, obviously the football team. The only thing I mentioned to him was that please be sure you include the band, you know, and I, I just, I think it's a wonderful thing to take pride in, they've had a lot of accomplishments, and you see them every now and then on the highway, there's always one in Connecticut for the women's basketball team.
I see a town, I see the board at Plainville.
Said I would bring it to your consideration, I, I fully support it.
I do as well, I got, yeah, sorry, but, you know, just to avoid any surprises, you know, just so that we can review it, we, we want to, we don't want to have a situation where it's out there, the signs are getting made, and now there's some subsequent comments.
What I would suggest is, they're willing to pay for the sign, I would suggest that he give the information, which we can review prior to that, and have Mr. McGee prepare the sign, and then the school will reimburse Mr. McGee, that way it gets done the appropriate way, and, and something that Bob is comfortable with.
I think more Jeff's concerned too, make sure it does our bylaws too, Jeff, you mean two in size?
Well, Bob would know that.
Really, you know, just...
Okay.
Yeah, Bob would know that, and it complies with our bylaw, that's, that's why I'm suggesting.
Including like, like Jim just said, you know, if there's an oversight or something like, not, there shouldn't be at this point, because you've already made the point, but...
You never know, you never know.
But let, let's make sure, I mean, we, you know, we get, we get the credit for some things, but we certainly get the blame for nothing, so...
An omission of the band on that sign would not go over well, because I mean, that band has been phenomenal, Golden Man forever, just phenomenal, just, and, and they work as hard as any athletic team out there.
Did a great job at the Super Bowl at Gillette Stadium.
That they did, as did the team.
Bet you, as, as...
As did the team, yeah.
Proud moment. Okay, so...
Did you move that, Scott?
I moved it, yes.
I'll second.
Maybe Marion got, but who was it subject to, just subject to Bob's approval, or?
That, that he would submit, well...
Does design and wording to Bob McGee?
Well, I was suggesting that we review the wording, but that, that it be completed by Mr. McGee, and that the, and KP will reimburse us for the expense.
Yeah, I agree, and it, it should be, you know, show us what the sign is going to be, not just the wording, but so we know what size these signs are, what's, what's going to be installed.
That's why I suggested Bob do it, because rather than them doing it on their own, and, and you know...
And, and obviously, there's even safety considerations with colors and everything, I'm not saying we want to necessarily overcomplicate this, but...
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't...
I'm betting it's going to be green and gold.
Just did, but okay.
Yeah, God forbid we complicate it.
Has it been seconded?
Yes.
Okay, we've had plenty of discussion, all those in, yeah.
Well, I just got a...
Oh, come on.
Got it complicated a little bit, because that's my job, is, well, what if, I assume he's going to Rentham and Plainville too, I, so there's probably an economy of scale having somebody build them, so...
Well, we're probably not going to have anything to say about it, but I just want to understand what we're putting...
But he's having our, our DPW guys build them, and I'm not sure...
Oh, you mean in terms of...
Well, don't, do you think every town wants the same sign? I mean, our signs don't look the same as Plainville, and Plainville's don't look the same as Rentham.
I think we're trying to build one cohesive King Philip Regional District. Welcome to the King Philip Regional District, home of the blah, blah, blah.
You mean the place, the place I've lived for the last 24 hours?
Jack brings this up in the meta-comet, you've got all the players there.
I'll tell you what, why don't we, why don't, why don't we, why don't we empower Mr. Ha, why don't we make the motion to empower Mr. Hathaway to negotiate the signage?
I was going to say, we, all we have to really wait for is now we just, the motion was just to put the signs up in town.
You'd be careful for what you ask.
That was just to put up a town, I don't know who wants to deal with the details, but I don't.
Don't you vote to have a, no, never mind, I don't want to go down there.
And what happens if one of the other towns doesn't want to do it?
Then we do it.
I don't know, I just, I...
I'm just asking.
We could still put a sign up saying KP did it.
Of course we can, sure.
Welcome to the home of...
Okay, I'm just throwing out the conversation, I just...
You'll figure out the rest of it.
You're just, you're just, you're just upset because, you're just upset because the field hockey team is not going to be on the side, that's, that's what it is.
Not yet, maybe one more year.
Jack's wife is the coach of the field hockey team.
So, we back to Jim's...
I don't even remember what I, I don't even remember...
I thought you were going to mention my daughter was the captain of the field hockey team, no, that's, that's...
You mentioned that.
It was given this assignment, word, for approval, and then to Bob McGee to make him install the sign, and KP will pay for it.
Close enough.
But we have to Bob do it?
We have to mandate that, decide that, it's really, the request is just to consider putting up signage in town.
Well, Jack will figure it out, let's...
Why don't we just, why don't we just approve the signage as long as it complies with our bylaw, and let Mr. Hathaway work it out with the school?
And the other towns, if he so chooses, the other towns too.
How's that?
So a mandate.
Let's simplify it.
Motion has been made, seconded, and all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
He's seen the worst...
Did they vote to close the hearing?
No, nevermind.
What hearing?
Yeah, we did, we did.
Oh, he did?
I know, it was a joke, I'm sorry.
Discussion items, Jack, discussion items.
So, for Mr. Benton's...
He wants to go home.
You are a courageous man.
Yeah, he's, he's a good man.
Did you get a copy of the warrant by, okay, so we have...
Why don't you come up?
People will be...
You're hurting our feelings.
But people at home up in here, if you have comments, though, I mean, it, you know, it's frustrating for Ms. Gleason, if you have comments or say anything, they're not going to hear it.
So, in a formal introduction, Chairman of our advisory...
Mr. Dave Benny.
Mr. Benton, he's tired.
Yes, I don't blame him. All right, so what?
Okay, so, I'm going to invite the other guy up too. We, we have a...
He's a bystander for now, he's going to, going to put in a resume for your job pretty soon.
My job's not open, your job's open.
After tonight, I see papers corralled over the place.
Whoa. He's quick.
We can't make yours open.
One for Jack. All right, so we have our, I can't...
Wait till his contract is...
Dave, how many, how many, what letters are?
Marion, how many more years has he got on his contract?
Alphabet, I know.
All right, so...
Twenty-six.
Eighteen, twenty-nine.
It wasn't a large warrant.
No.
So we have one through seven, which are the place, the...
Financial.
Yeah, the generic ones, and then we have A through R, which, we did it that way because, so they wouldn't predetermine the order, I guess, is...
We're going to call Jonathan.
Yeah, and that way, after we start discussing, and when we rearrange them, we'll, there's a map that goes from letter to number. So I guess I, you know, so tonight we need to close, we need to vote to close the warrant, probably after we go through it. Just for one thing that came up in, in process this year that we hadn't really encountered before is when we set up the schedule for the warrant, we have a motion to open the warrant, and Marion gives you the, the, kind of the, the high-level view of this process, the schedule, and we have a deadline for warrant submission, and then we have, which is on last Thursday, and then we have, we actually vote to close the warrant tonight. Somebody potentially was going to try and bring in another warrant article, a petition, as, you know, there was discussion about it even this morning, so I had to talk to town council, and just, just for future reference, you know, the, the warrant is technically open, and if we get another petition article, we would have to, we would have to accept it until you guys actually vote to close the warrant, so, and there's no real way around that. The reason we set the deadline for last Thursday is that so we can have a little bit of time to kind of put it together, and, yeah, but anyway, so that's just a...
But you're just clever, just so I'm tied, I don't want to slow down tight, so, but by law, though, a petition article can come in up until the date, up until the date it's closed.
Could hand it to us right now.
Okay, I got you, okay, that's fine. Yeah, oh, he's got something? David, you have anything?
You've got to get five, you've got to get five friends that live in town, so...
Oh, it's only five?
Ten, sorry, ten.
Yeah, it's all right, look, okay.
Anyway, so, you know, I don't think I'll, you know, unless you want me to, go through the seven articles, the, the ones after that...
Start at H is the first thing, it's not boilerplate, right?
H?
H is the first, yeah, P3, no, H, H is, everything's boilerplate up to H.
You know, we have capital articles, I know, obviously we'll have a water portion of that, we do have prison mitigation funds of $247,000 that came in, so I've, I've certainly had requests from department heads for capital, trucks, you know, DPW for one thing. Bob McGee would, you know, in a perfect world, he would love to have another capital article for roads, you know, he, he, you've heard him say, and, and I'll just say it again really quickly, he talks about the Chapter 90 funding is really, you know, it's, it's, I wouldn't say adequate, adequate, but, but that, that can go into the little neighborhoods, but if we start doing one Main Street, or Secoak, or Needham, that really eats up that whole allotment very quickly, so he, you know, he would be happy to talk to us about a road article if we wanted to do that, so that we can have that discussion at, at our next meeting, we'll have the debt scheduled for you, both the included and excluded debt, so that we can talk about potentially adding more debt. B is just committee reports, C is just Chapter 90.
You didn't trust my judgment, Jack, that we should go right to H?
Oh, I, I said H, and then I thought somebody corrected me and said A.
I know, unless someone has a problem, I mean, these are all boilerplates, unless I want to, you want to stay here, I mean, I don't know, because we don't...
All right, so H, H is, I'll go right to H. Marijuana article, there's, there are some police chiefs and, and other people putting together model bylaws that, to be considered. One town council threw in an idea of just having a moratorium for 18 months while those state models are put together, I thought that was a good idea, so that might be, we'll come back with a, with obviously more information about that in two weeks, certainly welcome any input you have on that. Community Preservation Fund, looking for their operating budget.
Sorry, Jack, on the H, because we're putting this on based on the percentage of vote in Norfolk, and the feeling that the residents did not...
The, the town defeated the, the concept of, of having recreational marijuana use, so, I think certainly that the police department and the police chief is, is a strong opponent to recreational marijuana. Certainly there's a financial discussion to have as well, because if we had, if we did have a recreational marijuana shop, you could get...
You said the police chiefs are for or against tending recreational?
I meant to say against, I'm not sure what I said.
You said for.
I said opponent of, not a pro.
Either way, they're against.
I knew the answer, I just wanted you, I, I thought you said for, they're against.
But it, there is, there is, you leave revenue on the table.
I don't know what I said.
Okay.
I don't care what I said, but you're right, he's an opponent. Okay, the Recreation Department has made a request to the Community Preservation Committee to have $86,000 to install a irrigation system, including a well at the Freeman Kennedy, we don't have that, and of course, we had a lot of discussion about that last year, because we were watering the, the fields off the municipal water system, and we would, we would prefer not to. I don't know much about this one, but it's from the planner, it's a zoning article to accommodate some childcare facilities in our different commercial districts. Jim, this is one that you and I talked about a little bit, and I'm not sure actually, at the end of the day, we want this one or not, but this is, this was to, this is to accept Lake Street, the un, the gravelled, the non-paved portion of Lake Street. We had a discussion, and we can get into that a little bit in executive session, but we had a discussion with the attorney representing the town, the insurance company's attorney, talking about the process, and that's, that's still a process that is, timeline is really kind of unsure of, and...
Can we defer that discussion until executive session? Because we're in, we're in a lawsuit on this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely, we have it on the agenda for executive session.
Just if we're going to take it out, we'll have to open, close.
We probably ought to just include N in that discussion as well.
Well, that's a petition, it'll be part of the discussion, but yes, but that one's staying on. All right, so N is a, is a petition that is, you can see what it is there, and it's, it's to move along the process on Lake Street. Honestly, trying to get by the injunction is the problem, so that's, whatever. O is, O is another petition, it's from the group of people that we met last year that, talking about the Spectrum Pipeline and asking the town to take some action, based on the information in the, in the article.
So, we voted on intervenor status.
We did.
And so, this is related to that, or is this, I mean, I just want to make sure I understand what this is.
It's just an urging, I don't see it has any teeth, maybe not teeth, but it just states our, or the will of the people.
Okay, so this is by petition, it's the same, it's the same group that came before us, okay.
Yeah, I, I think it's what I would call a non-binding resolution, I mean, it's asking us to, it's asking us to take some action, but it's really just, like you said, urging, noting the town meeting is, is recording their statement, it's asking the governor to take action, and it's asking the whole bunch of elected representatives to take some P is, is a petition, asking us to have more of a process to, prior to town meeting.
Can you...
I can't.
Well, I, I read it too, can you ask town council to review this quickly? Well, I read it too, can you ask town council to review this quickly? I mean, I had some real question, I understand and applaud what the attempt is. But there's some things in here that I don't think we can do.
You mean, from a practical standpoint?
Well, not only from a practical standpoint, but legally, you know, open meeting laws and things of that nature, I'm, I'm not sure. There are very defined roles and responsibilities of various boards in town, and we can't advocate those roles. And I, when I read this, it, and this isn't a power thing, I, it just, we've got to follow the laws. This, at least as I understand Massachusetts law, I think this creates a problem.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I'm looking at the last paragraph on page five here, you know, whereas Norfolk board and committee meetings are normally structured to have residents address the board or committee on one issue at a time, rather than on a broad combination of issues affecting various areas of town government. I mean, I think to your point, we're supposed to have a more structured agenda, so that residents know, other residents may have interests, they know whether to come or not.
Right, we have to have an agenda by law.
Open, yeah, open meeting law. So, so I think I agree with you, from a practical standpoint, I'm not sure it works either, but from an open meeting standpoint, in terms of sufficient notice for interested parties, interested residents, I'm not sure that that would accomplish that goal. It's quite, it's quite long.
It is, and it's very well intended, and, and, you know, I applaud anything that gets people more involved, I think that's a good thing. But this, to me, goes way too far, and, and that it, it, I'm not even sure that we can legally do that. Just, all I'm asking is just, at the early stages, you know, rather than the later stages, before it gets into the advisory board's debate and so on, that we get an opinion from town council on this. And if he's okay with it, then it's a petition, we go through the process.
Are you trying to say, like, if the town council says it's not, can't do it, we can remove it? I didn't know we had that.
No, 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 I, I, but we need to know.
So we're going to go through the process anyway, I mean.
If, if the attorney general, let's just say it passes, and town council's told us the attorney general's not going to approve this, because it violates law one, two, and nine, and 12, or whatever, and I don't know that, but, you know. I just want to know that in advance.
Right, let people know, so I get that, so people spend a lot more time.
Because I think that's information people should know, and I'm not challenging the intent or any of that.
I get that, I just wanted to make sure.
When I read through this, there were flags that came up, that's one of them, Jeff, that said, you know, I'm not sure we can do that. But we can't have an open agenda on a board of six, like, a meeting, and vote on something that wasn't posted, we can't do that.
Well, again, not to put words into what's said here, but it doesn't necessarily, doesn't, what he, what they're trying to do too, doesn't necessarily mean vote, just have a discussion, like, okay, like, we voted on the entertainment license, but what's the far, we, you know, if someone wanted to have engagement, what's the reaching of, what should we think about all of our, our non-commercial land we have in Norfolk? What would be the people's opinion, you know, should we try to put a petition together to change the 61B law? That's what I think some of us want to have.
Yeah, then it should be worded differently.
Yeah, again, I don't want to, you know, words, I don't want to spend any more time on it, you know, because I don't know.
I mean, you could have, you could have an open forum at a meeting, I mean, school committee does that, you know, you can have an open forum where anyone's welcome to come in and say anything they want to say. We just can't deliberate it and debate it and all of that, we can listen. That's, that's a good thing, I don't have a problem with that. Maybe a way around it would be to submit specific agenda items for specific meetings that people want to come into. I don't know all the answers, but just when I read through it, there were things that concerned me, that's all.
Yeah, yeah.
And maybe we could reframe it in a way, or suggest ways that would get there the same way, I don't know. And I did know a couple of these webpages, and...
There, it didn't seem like any, anyone interacted with Mass, so I agree with you, Jim, so we have laws in Massachusetts, because the old Commonwealth idea, right, versus these references, it doesn't mean it's not allowed in Mass, it's just, I didn't see any reference, oh, it wasn't, I'm sorry, there was Cambridge, I missed that, so, okay, enough.
Yeah, I mean, a lot, a lot of these are California, there's one in Montana, I mean, you know, every state has different laws. Anyway, okay.
Yes, I second that.
If it works, it works.
Yep.
And then the next one is noise bylaw, again, submitted by petition.
And then the...
And then R is the...
It wasn't clear on this one, are we replacing an existing bylaw? I thought we had a noise bylaw.
We do.
It's by petition, so I'm guessing they're looking for more rigorous requirements, you know, standards. So this is something that Bob Bullock would render some comments to the board.
It doesn't say, they necessarily, whereas we want to replace, like, F two.
Obviously, if we had written it, it would have been to, to, this is to insert into general bylaws, section blah, 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 and replace, you know.
So, how does that work, and Jayo suggests they make, someone, the petition will have to make a friendly amendment to himself?
I assume he would allow that to be a friendly amendment to, to put it into the right place, I don't...
Well, I agree, because like Dave said, where's it go, I know where, I think I know where they want to do, because we do have a noise bylaw, D and F or something like that, and they want to replace, or add to, or whatever, in addition to.
Can you talk about, moderator? And then R is, I think we've started to talk about there is the pilot, so we're, we're working on two pilots, one is done, one is done for the Pine Street, so that is to have, we ended up agreeing upon the assessed values over the...
You did?
Twenty period.
Oh.
Yeah, we didn't, but the question, the open question was, they wanted to also have a fixed tax rate.
Right, yeah.
And they've agreed not to take that out, so, so, and it makes sense, from the assessor's point of view, to have the, the solar panels, you know, they're at 100% value the first year, and then they have a depreciation schedule.
Right, yeah.
It's not, it's not rocket science.
That's just the solar, but we don't, we don't try to go after the economic value of having that solar, that's not allowed. No, it's tricky, I mean, I want to make, again, keeping things simple, but there's economic value to them.
Yeah, no, we're not, appreciating, I, I mean, I know what you mean, if the economic value as far as the...
It saves the landowner...
Change in the energy rate and all that stuff.
Yeah, I just, you know, say his electricity bill is 100,000 a year, and with having those solar, you know, the value of solar the first year is 100,000, and he gets a $50,000 electricity saving, his value, his economic value of 150, we're not, one may not be, by law, be able to capture that, or talk about that, you know, I mean, go after that, and the next year it gets a little, you know, again, I didn't want to make it overly complicated.
Yeah, I mean, I figure it kind of defeats the purpose, I mean, I get what you're saying, and we can look at it, you know.
No, no, if you're happy, you know, I don't even put the numbers.
I'm happy and the assessor's happy.
Do you not want to show the numbers, or are you going to talk about that town meeting, I think about that before, just so people know, is it, we don't have to, we don't want to? Your article, I don't know what people are asking, but if people ask.
I think we would have somebody, whether it's, it's probably not me, you know, well, it might be because of the chief, I would have a chief assessor do it, but there's change in chief assessors at the moment.
But, no, I mean, just, what's, is it complicated, isn't there a number at least of the first year, or because one's sliding?
Yeah, we could, we, probably a good idea is to just put together a bullet point of what the, you know, I don't think people want to see the whole pilot agreement, but we can give them a bullet point of what the...
I mean, maybe no one asked, I'm just curious, like you said, you know.
Well, I have to say, I still find this the strangest thing, that we're asking town meeting to approve an agreement, but we're not going to show them the agreement?
That's why I think we have a, we have a, we have an executive summary of the agreement, do we really, I don't think there's...
I don't know, I just, well, I find it strange that town meeting has to approve an actual agreement.
Like, yeah, because we don't approve the history.
Usually it's give authority for the board of selectmen to enter into agreement.
That's specifically in the law, we've gone through that, I mean, that was...
No, 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 yeah, but I feel like, so if you're asking the town to approve an agreement...
They want to see it, so you could get somebody to nitpick and see it, you're right, no, I agree, you know, somebody...
Yeah, I mean, I, you know, maybe as, as part of the advisory board recommendations, we would, again, not, not mail out the whole agreement, but we'll have the agreement available on the website with a reference on, in the advisory board recommendations.
We could print the exact summary, people have the whole... Great, and me, how we have boxes and stuff at the meeting?
I don't think we want 21 copies of, 150 copies of a 21-page agreement.
Yeah, I'd say, do the recommendation, we reference the website where it'll be.
And we'll have some available, if, if there's somebody that really wants one at the meeting.
Can't we put together an executive summary of that?
Yeah, just a great idea. That was the first, that's how I started the conversation.
We're losing, we're losing.
Well, nobody was paying any attention to you.
I was, also, and I'll check, because these two, you said, they're, what about the one we just signed, though, for the Caritas one, isn't that a pilot?
It's not a solar pilot, so it doesn't have the same requirements.
Oh, okay, this is just solar pilots, yeah, okay, okay, gotcha, thank you. So, so, this is strictly then solar pilots, so we can then, we don't have to go to town meeting for regular pilots?
Correct.
Oh, okay, geez, even, that doesn't make no sense either, right, you can't, you shouldn't have one, I don't want to go to either one.
Joe Fernandez, longtime advisor, town administrator in Towne Plainville, if it makes sense, it's against the law in Massachusetts, so.
I get it. Sadly, sadly, he's right.
In some instances, I think he is.
What's up?
Jack has no aspirations for a state job, has he?
Has he signed this, has he signature this?
Before I take it home?
Okay, so, Jack?
Yep.
That's, that's the end of the review as far as the warrant, so, you're looking for us to...
Take a vote to close the warrant, whether or not you want to take that Lake Street one off now, or af, or sometime in the future. I don't know what the right answer is, honestly, I, so, Article M is the, is, you know, so we're in the middle of litigation with a resident on Lake Street about the status of the ownership. We contend that we own Lake Street, we've owned it, and it's been a public way since the, you know, early 1930, prior to 1930. He's got an injunction against us, and prevented us from doing work down there. One of the strategies we talked about with town, the, not town council, with the insurance company council, is to, is to have a vote to accept the, the road. Later in that conversation, the concern came about, well, if we accept it, are we then admitting that we didn't have control of the road in the first place, prior to today? So, you know, I have, town council hasn't weighed in on this, so, we could probably just, why don't we just close it the way it is now, and then we can all just open and close it later, I...
Yes, that'd be the best.
I'd be more inclined to remove it, I, you know, I was in that meeting, and there was a vote, I think our position is very defendable, very strong, that we own the road. And there was a vote in town, while there is no record of the town formally accepting it by vote, and this isn't the only street in town that's occurred. There is a vote where there was a petition, I believe, to make Lake Street a private road, and that petition was defeated, so...
One could argue that.
Again, maybe, maybe, you know, logic really doesn't play a role here, but one would logically think that if they brought a petition forward to make it a private road, and it was defeated, then it had to have been a public road to begin with. Now, that may be too simplistic for Massachusetts law, but it seems to work for me, and I, I just don't know, we're close to resolution on this.
We've never been closer.
All right, so I'll make a motion to remove Article A.
You've reached the end of my disc, I'm going to have to take a time reload.
Okay, so the board will...
Did you miss that conversation?
No, I got that.
Okay. Okay.
So, do I, do I have a motion to recess, take a, how, how long do you need?
It's over, I mean, I filled the whole...
Oh, you can't put another disc on?
Let's go and take a look.
Well, the rest of it isn't very exciting.
How long?
Three minutes.
Three minutes? Go for it.
We'll take a five-minute recess, do I have a motion to take a five-minute recess?
Second.
Motion was made and seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Board is in recess for five minutes. Okay, so, the Norfolk Board of Selectmen is back in session after a brief recess, about a five-minute recess, because NCTV ran out of tape, because this happens to be a particularly long meeting, so...
First time it's ever happened in my tenure, Mr. Valone, just so you know.
It's happened all the time when I chaired the planning board, I assure you.
Oh, there's a pattern. Yes, it won't, I assure you, it would not happen.
Just about that stand, a motion to remove Article M and then close the warrant.
Yes, it's been moved.
Moved, seconded, was it? Action's been made, seconded, any further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
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 I make a motion to close the town warrant?
Aye, second.
Further discussion, hearing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Southwood status, still no more feedback from, the last feedback we had raised back this week, and he hasn't gotten any more feedback, but the last feedback we had was, George was taking, Mr. Valone was taking the information, that we took it off the warrant, and he was going to go back and thanked us, and, and, you know, was going to go back and do some thanking. We have not heard directly from the archdiocese, not that we need to, but, but I think Mr. Valone, there was, there was some commentary anyway, for what it's worth, that he may try and come back in the fall, so I'm not sure, we haven't heard anything else since then, so, I'm sure he has, he's probably negotiating with the church, the archdiocese at this point.
Can I ask a question of colleagues on that, that's ultimately, because Jane Dewey brought up, I know it's always been our back thing, and more important, make sure we get the money that they owe us for the pilot, whatever, will we, can we consider starting the process to have them tear down the hospital, regardless of time, or we don't want to antagonize, I don't know how you guys feel, like...
Consider what?
Starting, we have, we have the legal right to start the process to require them, what, the archdiocese, to start to take down that hospital. We've never done it yet, I don't know why, I mean, unless you don't want to piss them off, but we don't, we do.
You go right ahead, I...
I mean, I, I mean, it was brought up in the meeting that we had with the archdiocese. They made it very clear that they don't care whether we try to make them do that or not, they're not going to do it. They don't have the funds to do it, it's in a separate LLC. Now, you know, whether this is a lawyer's bluff, or what, I have no idea, but they made it, would you say?
Yep, absolutely.
Crystal clear, do what you will, but we're not doing it.
Right, but they could be compelled by the court, they can't be that...
They could, but...
So, there's a process, like, we tried to execute with Buckley and Mann, that we'd go, go to town meeting, and have an article that authorizes the building commissioner, and I think he has to put together a little committee, architect, and engineer. Yeah, to condemn it, and then...
It's a long process.
And then it would authorize the town to, to fund the...
Oh, I don't want to do that, because we might never get our money back.
Lean them for the, for that value.
Then you put a lien on the property.
So then we would get our money then?
Yeah.
Well, at some point.
Right, well, they want to sell it too, I don't, I don't want to muddy any deals, and we have good relations, and I get it.
I think it was 300,000, wasn't it?
Yeah, you know, I don't want to muddy the relations, because we, we have good work relations, I just know Jay, but, you know, people are getting frustrated a little bit, because I don't, I think they want, it sounds like they really want to find their next buyer, if, if not George, so, it's going to be coming down maybe sooner or later, but if that falls apart, we go, we go away for another 20 years, we've lost 20 years of having buildings, getting worse and worse.
No, I mean, the building has, you know...
Bob seems to be very concerned about the building.
It's a problem.
Bob is concerned about it, and he, and, you know, we signed, we signed a memorandum of understanding, or some agreement with the, with the archdiocese at some point, that we would be patient with them while we went through this process.
Yeah.
And I, and I don't remember the details of what the end of that process was.
Okay, I don't want to, you know...
But it's, it's, we're probably there, and, you know, and, I mean, I can certainly, you know...
It's not, these guys don't, like, I don't...
The commissioner and the fire chief would like that building down.
Right, and it's not going to happen for years, you know, I don't know, it's just, I just thought, you know, I keep thinking about it, but it's, yeah.
I, I have no, I was in that meeting, and I have no idea what the next steps are going to be there. I'm confident that they're going to be very aggressive in trying to sell it, but they've been aggressive trying to sell it for a long time, so whether there's somebody lined up or not, I don't know.
Yeah.
And they, they didn't disclose that.
They don't have it, I got it.
Oh, I got a couple of good ones. So, the next one's easy, Pond Street Beverage Request, we had a request from a local vendor, store, who wanted to sell their breakfast materials, whatever, lunch materials at, at Pond Street. Mary and I didn't take any action on that, because we wanted to talk to you about, what do you think the right process is, I guess. And I was kind of thinking that we would, not that we have to bid it out, but at least solicit, you know, all the local restaurants.
Right, who might want to do that, make it more of an open process.
Yeah, you have, you have.
I think it has to be an open process, yeah.
It's not fair, it's great that this person or business came up with the idea first, I feel bad, like I said, I, I thought, why does everyone else get a chance? We have to do, I think we should do that, we, I don't know if we have to, but I think we definitely should.
Okay, so we will, we will do that, I mean...
I think we should solicit some input from recreation, too.
We did, and I did talk to Todd about it, who's the chairman of the recreation, and I can always ask Mr. Leach, who's on the board of recreation, but I think Todd was, certainly wouldn't mind event, you know, his, his comment back, and he, he didn't bring it to his board yet, but as, they would, they wouldn't mind a vendor up there, I don't think they particularly care if it's one A or B.
Or multiple, maybe we have, again, I don't want to overdo it, but, you know, ice cream truck goes there now, so now, like, just, again, you know, it's, you can make a comparative argument, if they want to have multiple vendors, one guy, you know, one could be breakfast burritos, one could be organic juices, right? So there's two different kind of food and different choices, actually give people more choices, too, but I think we should, you know...
You know, and then, and I, and I can't, there is, then there is the longer term...
Yeah, I was just going to raise that up.
...have a building up there at some point.
Well, then you, then you, I don't want to say, then you take it away, right? It's condition, yeah, we're not going to hurt our own business, or someone like rents that space from us, or the town, we, at that point, you have to change it, right? I mean, honestly, you know, it's not a permanent thing, I would think, right? People understand that.
You know, this is the first I've seen of it, this hasn't come before the board yet.
No, it just came in, yeah, it just came to us, and...
So, I, I don't know anything about it, but that's kind of an iffy one for me.
Yeah.
From a recreational board perspective, I, you know, I'm...
I think what they're trying to do is like what Silas does...
Right, with the coffee in the morning, be where the customers are.
Yeah, yeah, well, but that's, but this is town-owned land, you know, it's a recreational facility, it's, it's, it's different than going to the train stop, which we don't own, it's not our land, you know, it's, it's, to me, different, I, I don't want, I don't know, I'm not, there's something about commercializing Pond Street that kind of doesn't sit well with me, and I know that we have...
I'd be psyched when I was sitting there for a four-hour baseball game, if I could get a burger and a dog, I'm starving. Again, that's my personal opinion, I'm not commercialized, and they already, we already allow ice, well, we don't allow, no one's ever asked, but ice cream trucks go there, and they're selling food.
He's in the parking lot all the time.
Right, it's already being done.
This person said that they were...
I don't do, I just feel like...
Parents had asked them.
Oh, yeah, no, I, I agree, I mean...
If there's a demand, then it's okay, sure, I don't know.
So, the other thing is, do we want to charge, we don't want, do we want to charge a fee to some, like a rights, you know?
Yeah, I think we should.
Auction off, or not auction off, but...
It's almost like a license fee, an annual license fee, you know, just like, you know, said, you know...
Absolutely, yeah, I mean, we would need to do that, I mean, why don't we noodle on this here between now and the next meeting? It's kind of late to be taking that on.
Honestly, I think the recreation board should come up with a recommendation first.
Yeah.
That's fine, I'd be happy to.
I don't, I mean, I just, I don't know.
Maybe we should start there, you know, with a recommendation, and then we can...
I'll send them on my mobile, and ask them to...
The Pine.
The Pine. So, the bottom one is, oh, the bottom one is, and then I have one under town administrator update, just to get back to you. Town-owned land, so, we've been going through the inventory of town-owned land, and we have all, obviously, the inventory of parcels that are, were taken by tax title, that we, we already have a generic article that allows us to auction those off whenever, whenever the selectman decides to, so we can do that. A lot of those parcels are, are, you know, some are parcels that, there are probably two parcels that could potentially be buildable parcels, and they're still, and they're pretty questionable at that, so we would probably, we would, we may come back to do a perk test on those. The, the majority of the other ones, and we're talking probably about 25 other parcels, they're parcels that we would auction off that only a neighbor would buy, that would, you know, just give them a little more area, that would give them some comfort that that land was never going to be built on, whatever, I would suggest that we put a minimum, you know, what if we, figure, determine what a minimum is on each of those parcels, and if they're willing to pay, you know, basically, whatever covers our cost of the auction, and legal fees to, to transfer the things, and then we'd give, you know, we'd... and legal fees to transfer the things, and then we'd give, you know, we'd auction those off, very similar to what we did back in 2003.
Or Boardman, is that we did? That was Boardman, right. Didn't we do one on Boardman?
Boardman is the, is one that we, that was the house that we auctioned off. We don't have any houses.
Right, no, I'm saying, same idea, though, I mean...
Same idea. And that we took by tax title, so we didn't have to go to town meeting and ask for permission. There, and hard objects away from Jim. There are a couple of articles, a couple of parcels on...
Cottage.
Nope.
Not cottage?
No, because those are tax titles, so we could do those. Those may be one of the buildable ones. There are some on Rockwood Road, getting close to Millis, not, not that far, but on the other side of Cleveland Street, on the left, that those are, those could be buildable. Oh, there's a lot of wetlands in there. But there are some parcels, the, do we want to, let me cut short.
Yeah, I was going to say, yeah.
The, the school land that comes into that back neighborhood, do we want to have a discussion about selling off those valuable lots? That's, and just, there's two, and so, you guys may want to go out and look at them if you haven't seen them. It's an impact to that neighborhood, or at least it was five years ago, when we had a discussion about these things. And then we talked about, you know, we ended up taking the, we took the access road out of that same block of land, but there were some art, and I'm drawing a blank now, because it's late, but the name of that...
Geneva.
Geneva. There's a couple of parcels, we could carve out a couple of parcels on Geneva that would probably, you know, potentially be $100,000 each that we could auction off. It's, that neighborhood is sensitive to that.
Sensitive to adding two houses.
You know, I, I think, I think I'm the only one that was on the board when this all came up.
That was a long time ago.
So, I would want, I would ask personally, I mean, you guys are off the hook on this. I would want to go back and, because I'm trying to remember whether we made any commitments at the time to the neighbors when we were trying to get that access road in. Because I know this was a topic. I know this was a point of discussion, and, and, you know, because I was on the board, I feel if I was party to a commitment, then I have to stand by that commitment. And I honestly just don't remember. And I know we had lots of discussion. I know Mr. Garrity was on the board.
I must have been on the board, too, because I was there for some of the access, well, for the access road, but I don't remember anything being talked about the house in Geneva, you know, I don't...
Oh, there was a whole discussion around those lots.
I didn't know, yeah.
It was the biggest concern of the neighbors in that area, and the reason they were initially against that road was fearful that we were going to put houses in there.
A lot of houses. It's just two houses.
Well, one, two, three didn't matter. They, they just didn't want, they knew they were buildable lots there, and they were very concerned that this was going to open up the area and that we were going to pursue building those lots. And I just don't remember how we left that. You know, I don't personally remember making any commitments that we'd not do that, but I just, you know, there are minutes. I just want to go back and...
I remember it was a sensitive subject. I wasn't on this board, but just from the planning board, which wasn't involved. And we, the planning board wasn't involved in that either, because it was a school, school project.
No, this was on the board.
But I heard, you know, this board had some involvement, but I...
Okay, wait, you're looking at it.
I just don't remember. I just don't remember, Scott.
I mean, we don't have, at this point, this was on the agenda a couple of weeks ago, you know, so if we, if we were going to do this, we'd have to open up the warrant again. Again, there's no, there's no, there's no urgency to do this either, so, you know, this may be something we work, look at this summer, and we have at a fall town meeting, so I'm not...
Well, I'm just, just...
Original intent was to try and do it for this time.
Yeah, it's just, I mean, you guys, I mean, this is just personal to me, because I...
Well, I might have been on the board, too, though, so I don't know. I might just know.
You might have been. I didn't remember.
You know, because five years, it would be close. It either was or just joined right after.
It was contentious. It was really contentious, and there was a ton of discussion around the building lots there. And there was also an issue about whether it was under the privilege of the school committee or the Board of Selectmen.
I've run into a glitch.
Okay.
I think we're just about done, so...
Yeah, we're done.
Oh, yeah. Let's go, because, yeah, sorry, another check. You're taking, you know, right? The two candle people.
Okay, I think we're back.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, so, the, the meeting of the Norfolk Board of Selectmen has been interrupted a few times because of problems with the tape here with the NCTV. So, you know, the, the meeting is back in session, and Mr. Hathaway, you said you had one additional...
I have one more item. So, we talked about this at one point, and we never really concluded the, so, I don't know if you've seen it. I actually have pictures on my phone. I can show you later, of the community garden at, at Gump's Old Farm there. It's beautiful. It's a...
It is.
There are 32 beds, I think, and, again, Mr. The Lyons and Mr. Frank Zoli, in particular, Zoli, deserves a ton of credit. I mean, I was...
Blown away.
I had heard about it, and then I went up there, and I was blown away about, you know, the fence and the, the power and the, and all the detail work he did. It was outstanding. The old Navy guy, give him credit. So, he did a great job. So, he continued going forward down the process, and he's advertised, and they're going, he worked with me. We're going to jointly hold the lottery this coming Saturday. He has invited you guys to come if you want to go down to the Grange and participate. He would love to have you pulling the names out. If you, if you're interested, do, whatever you guys want to do, you can do. He did advertise the old fees, and I, we had some discussion about lowering them.
I saw it, yeah.
So, if you want to lower them, I mean, and Jim gave me some feedback. He would definitely like to lower them.
Yeah, from 60 to 50.
We can, we can, you know, we can make that change, and just, and I'll work with Frank on that, so.
Okay.
So, I think $60 per season is what he had for the standard ones. We talked about going down to 50, if you want, and then, and then lowering, I think, by $5 on the other ones.
That was my thought.
Yeah.
You guys, whatever you want to leave it.
I think we've already voted on that.
I thought we had, but...
Oh, we did. Oh, I apologize. I didn't realize we'd voted on the...
This was a media with this, but I don't think I got to see it.
Yeah, you may not have been there.
I'm fine with it.
I know, I know Jim was.
Okay, all right, so, we'll go back to the minutes, and we'll change, we'll, I'll work with Frank on that. So, again, you're welcome. 10 o'clock.
What time? 10 o'clock.
10 o'clock on Saturday. If you know you're coming, just let me know, so I can...
Post it.
I, I'm not, I...
I don't think we need to post. It's a ceremonial event.
We have a hockey game.
Okay.
I think I could be there. Let me, let me check. I'm going to be there, so.
I put my name.
You can help set up tables, too.
Do you have more applicants than you do spots?
No, he had like 15 at this point, but I think...
It's closed, all right. Deadline's already passed.
There may not be a need.
There may not be, the lottery may be not very dramatic.
Okay, okay.
Scott's got one.
I put my name. So, why would you, shouldn't you call it taking a lot? If there's, like you said, if there's 27 spots, there's only 15 people. It's not a lottery. It's...
Well, you're still going to have a lottery to, so people can choose which one they want.
Oh, by order when you come out and stuff like, oh, that's what, oh, I didn't know any of that. I didn't, oh, okay. I want the one with the sun.
Not that anyone's better than others, although some are, some are up high and some are down low.
Well, that was for handicapped.
Yeah, so, yeah, some you can't take. I can't, I'm not taking some person, a handicap person who needed up low or high, whatever they need. I'll just take whatever.
Okay, so, the board will soon move from regular to executive session, but before we do that, Jack had shared something with the board prior to our last meeting, and because the end of the meeting came with a fire alarm, we never got to it, and that is the announcement of Mr. Oliveri's passing. And so, Mr. Oliveri, I certainly remember him from the Norfolk School Committee, and I know he was involved in other committees in the town, and our condolences to his family, for sure, and our apologies that we didn't get to that at the last meeting because of the abrupt ending. But you gentlemen probably remember, especially you, Jim, who have been involved in the school committee over the years and such, so.
One, one, sorry, one more thing before we go to executive session. Can I make a motion to approve the minutes of January 10, 2017?
On second.
Right here, buddy.
It's getting late.
I'm trying to help you.
Motion's been made and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Okay, so, the board will be moving to executive session. Do, this will be a roll call vote, but first, we need to take a vote.
Do you want to have any, I know it's very late, and we're all anxious to go home, but do you want, have any quick comment on King Philip?
Maybe next meeting.
Okay.
Next meeting. So, we'll, we'll take a vote to move to executive session, and we'll take a roll call vote individually on each of the sessions.
I move to go into executive session. Let me read it. It is worded, "I move to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have detrimental effect on bargaining or litigation position of the public body or chair, so declares, and the topic at hand is Lake Street, under which we are in suit."
Scott Bogby, aye?
Just, we were also be talking about the police union.
Yeah, we're going to do that separately. Yeah, let's do that separately, separate motion.
Well, you can only go into executive session once.
Well, but we want to be clear. I'm a stickler about, you know...
Mary, may I rephrase the motion? I, I move to go into executive session for the purposes of discussing the litigation associated with Lake Street and for the bargaining position associated with the police union.
You want to do it separately. Scott Bogby, aye?
Jim Lee, aye.
Further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye.
Jim Lee, aye.
Scott Bogby, aye.
Jim Lee, aye.
Jeff Palumbo, aye.
That's not what Jeff wanted, but, okay.